They wouldn't, they wouldn't let him do it in Tampa. So they took their Lafayette Street name to Kennedy, one month after the assassination. You can still feel it, I was dealing with these guys at the hotel, you can feel it, still feeling how they drag their feet on that, you know? Everyone, everyone, now I'm thinking even this other guy. He's coming, everything is in my six with that FBI stuff. No wonder. It's great, it's great, it's great. Oh, you guys aren't all together, are you? Cause they had to have that car come up to bump, bump this car out of here, right? Otherwise he would've just, they would've all agreed. You guys aren't all on the same side, it's hard to see the sides, you know?
I'm just a fringe guy.
Yeah. Oh wow. Check him out, man. You gotta get moving. It's getting hot too. Damn, man. Oh yeah, yeah. Oh god, man. Man, Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Jones, okay, that's what they would do. You know what they would do, cause they never do this, they never like run it. Except for like Blue Monday or something, they run it, they take everything off the street, but they usually keep everything crazy cluttered and then they add their new stuff in. What? What? What, what do you want? For what? I'll just ask them from here. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. Nah, I don't believe it. I don't believe people anymore, cause it's like a personal, right, tell, what is it about, is it about, what's it about? Like what kind of personal stuff is it? Oh, you do, okay. Give me some comments on YouTube, I don't wanna mess around, these guys are... No, no, you know how it is. I'll talk to you sometime though, but, I'm not in the mood to, no, it's getting weird here right now. I'm getting my spidey sense, you know what I mean? I'm a survivor, man, so maybe some other day. Took on, we have like four administrators and two lawyers in the room, we crushed them, me and my wife, you know? With no lawyer on our side, and then the police jumped up all the stuff, they had raping girls up there. Um, you know, that's what they got going on in Massachusetts, so I got in, it's actually doing police. It's fucking weird. Is it raining? Yeah. He went to heal, oh, it is raining! She must've seen where I went, she's like, "What's going on?" She's so fake. That's some fake shit too. They were trying to set me up out there. Lucas, I gotta um, report a crime, some danger, they're setting me up to jump me out there. There's Bart that one. She was telling me to come up to her car. Leave the camera on the tripod, far away. Go up to her car. And she's doing this stuff. And then... What, what'd you say? Oh, so if I'm gonna get attacked, I should go home? She was threatening me too? So Lucas, you said it too, right?
What did I do?
You threatened me too.
Who did?
You told me, like I said someone was gonna assault me, you told me to go home. Then she told me the same thing. I got on video.
Right back.
Ooh, sorry buddy. Haven't seen you in a while. Haven't seen you before, are you new?
Yup, I'm gonna go to the restroom now.
You gotta, yeah. I told Lucas and Officer Bush, and they both said then I should go home. So what, so what's up?
Are you speaking to me? Do you mind wanting to ask the police?
I asked, he doesn't wanna talk, it's really weird.
Oh, he doesn't wanna talk to you?
That's why I gotta like, I'd have to do, it's sort of like, I have to do years of research to figure out why anything goes on here. Even then, you don't know.
I hope you're doing well.
It's Officer Bush and Lucas, they won't talk to me. But they're in on it, they um... Officer Bush, we depend on you to be, you to be like, I'm just joking, man. This guy's so cool.
Alright, is there... Is there anything I can help you with, or no, if you don't wanna report, that's fine.
Why is that guy even talking to me, I don't wanna talk to him.
We're here to help people, you, you said you needed help, he's here to help.
He should be in charge, you gotta take charge, man.
I'm in charge, usually when you're in charge, you tell people to do this, do this stuff for you, so, he's doing it for me.
No, he's not.
Okay. See you checking out with Jordans, huh, you like them?
The Jordan, oh yeah, yeah.
Custom made.
Oh, they are.
Yeah? Not many chiefs rock those, right?
Not many.
Yeah.
They're comfortable, they work.
Aw man, you could play the NBA Finals in them, you can't even... Got one of these in these.
Yeah. Yeah. In Marco Island, um, the code enforcement.
It really didn't affect operations of us.
So you guys have a tunnel that goes from that one building down, down in those trailers to the police station, right?
No.
There was a tell, one guy did a tell.
Nah, if you go too, you go about six inches deep, you're gonna hit water, man.
I will, I mean, I just can't be ordered around.
Oh no, I'm not, no, no, I'm just gonna go out there.
I probably will, I just can't have it as a um, order.
Oh, okay.
I guess so, politely, it's very likely I'm just gonna follow your route, but I don't wanna say it.
Oh, okay.
Because I wanna lose face, I got in this business because I gotta be the guy, you know? You know what cops do, you know how cops are, how they always gotta dominate, and now you gotta do that myself.
So what do you need? You're standing really close to me, you're kind of, you're kind of...
I know, what I'm gonna, wait, am I standing too close?
Yeah, you're standing really close.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go over here, don't follow me.
Okay, I won't follow you.
You're following me, how can I get further away?
Oh, you wanna go out there, there's more space out there.
I want you to stop following me, I told you, you said I was too close, I said I was gonna walk away, and I said, "Don't follow me." You told me I'm too close, now you're following me. How do I get farther away from you?
Cause you're zooming in.
No, I'm following, I'm watching your feet, stop doing it. Can I get away from you, can I get farther away from you, or are you gonna stop following me?
Please do. Please do.
So I didn't do something wrong?
You did, I did.
Well, what do you say, you think I did something wrong? You are tired, aren't you?
Tired.
You're tired. And she doesn't do a thing anyway. You guys are retiring soon, right, they're taking it. They're finna, you guys are in a shape, and they keep it grumpy. They keep it grumpy and weird as you, you gotta retire grumpy. Like, here's your watch, Lucas. Here, like something. So you gotta walk right up behind me, right?
Stretch my legs.
But that's lying, you're just lying. Can I have a place where you're not walking up behind me?
I'm sorry?
Can I, can I get into a position where you're not walking up behind me? Or after you threaten me? Can I not, can I have a, have a situation where you're not coming up behind me after you threaten me? What? I mean, that's very regular, right, and then I got this guy. Like, what is it? Hey, do you still have your body cam on, or is it on? Can you make Lucas stop walking behind me and circling me? He threatened me on that, he threatened me with, today.
You know your pockets ripped on your jacket? Do you know that?
No, I don't know that.
Yeah, your, your pockets ripped.
Which one?
Your left one, you fall down?
How would that rip my pocket?
I don't know if someone like grabs you or slams you or something like that.
You said fall down, now it's like grabbing you.
Well, I don't know, cause it looks ripped, that's all, I just wanted you to be aware in case.
You did, no, you're lying though, you're just harassing me. Well, it's, it, well, we'll let other people try, yeah. Should I look at my pocket? You guys are gonna stop walking up behind me, I'll go, and I'd like to, what I'd like to do, get up against the wall, and I have you guys follow me, walk behind me, then I'll check my pocket, okay, will that make you happy? So you got the guy that they, oh, they knew he didn't drive out yet in his car, right, he's up in there somewhere. He's got, like, they're worried about the dude, they probably got some fugitives, um... You gotta come back and pay your tax, you gotta, right, that's, that's what it is, like, cause that, that Blue Monday? You guys are, you guys, the guys are still up in there, I think, right?
You gotta ask the, what, Southwest Florida?
Cause they know everything. Not now, of course not now. That was like, the money was going through there. It was just, um... I could tell. That's the only thing that's real, everything else, you know, I even say apparent. It's one place. I think. I know, man, well, that first one would go after squirrels, the first dog I noticed.
That dog will walk past squirrel.
The CIA dog, like, it was one of your locals, but it was trained, yeah, ooh, waterfloods here. You guys better not mess with me.
What's going on, what happened?
Damn.
Hey, make sure you film her, cause if she doesn't pick up after her dog, you'll...
Ah, you guys. I got more than that, though. More than that, man. You'll see. Oh, I've seen stuff, that would scare you, man. Wait till you find out. They're not fighting the Cubans anymore. The KGB, Cuban KGB, it's not unfriendly anymore. The Navy. I think. They have guys with, um, they look like Saddam with their mustache shaved, and they look like it. Oh, he's so worried about that. Now you're not worried about that, you just take lies, you should learn to talk about lying. It's so funny, cause that's not police training. It's not police training. I could tell you guys. That's not police training. This guy has real police training here, you guys just have actor training. And you guys are like, he's gonna still be here, you guys are gonna have to retire out of here. And me and this guy are still gonna be here. Right, you're still gonna be here in twenty years, these guys will be gone, Lucas is gonna be gone, this guy's gonna be gone. He's gonna be, you know, he's gonna be, have his boat and his whatever he wants, his boat, his palm tree. Oh, they did, okay. Damn, no signaling. On that one, I guess. Jeez. God, it's empty now. That's weird. Oh god, it's Lucas. Oh no, it's Officer Bush. Didn't look like a lot of activity. I'm just not up to it. Oh, I don't even know, okay, maybe there's a reflection. I have your reflection too, oh, there's a guy. I have to deal with these people. I lose my game.
John Foyle. Good afternoon. Um, I've been attending the council meetings to stop what the council is doing with JCPark. And the Coria Club, the JCPark alone and Yakavon. Little buildings, little desert real estate development. In listening to the objections of the Pickleball community last week. Uh, we're totally against the charging of usage fees. It occurred to me that there is, this is my expression, kind of the way I think, um... It occurred to me that there's a three-step model. That's going on in the way the city council approaches the parks. And so, and applying, um, to, uh, to the parks and developing lands and so forth. So the first step of this model is to use taxpayer money to build a facility. And, you know, and or develop land for public use. The second step of this model, uh, and it seems to be sort of like consistent, is to charge usage fees. And then the third step of this model, uh, usage fees like, uh, like parking or court fees. But then the third step of this model is to put in a, um, a, a third-party company to maintain, operate the area. And use, use, uh, use, uh, use, um, hey, don't... And to, um, to operate this and to, uh, make money as a third party. So with the Pickleball, uh, issue, uh, situation seems very clear, you know, build the facility, and then, um, they have to pay court fees. And then there's a third party that, you know, is maintaining the facility. And so, you know, that's not usually done like, you know, like the tennis courts, that have the, uh, at the parks. So, um, but let's look at like, uh, the Yak Club as a container for this model. Uh, first step is to, you know, use taxpayer money to demolish and building facilities such as the community center and parking structure, both of which will charge our usage fees, you know, in some way, you know, parking in the parking structure, it's probably, probably pretty hefty. And so, um, but this is not a self-funded thing. The, the term use of self-funded means that, uh, you know, the park is, you know, funding itself, the park is not funding itself. The taxpayer is then secondarily, the second step, the third step, funding the park. I guess that's all the time I have.
You have one else question this week from citizens, is that what, please, that's important? See, I'm not saying, is that what's down, please? Mr. City Manager, uh, maybe address some of the questions that you would please, when the permitting process ended with JCPark, and we had contracts of the engineering design permitting services. Uh, for that paper, parks, and like, uh, can I share today, and how that process works?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I think I could also address the Don Full Flag, the Boring Owl, and the piece that we're discussing, who would like to take care of all? Alright, thank you very much. Uh, in regards to the discussion regarding JCPark, um, so back in October, uh, October eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we had a meeting, a calendar, um, on how to proceed with the design concept. Uh, and what would be in, what would be out, we had, uh, discussions, uh, from the mid-terrible October eleven. Uh, I explained to you all that, uh, we would, we would start off with getting a design consultant, uh, to begin the design. Uh, they would submit to us a thirty, sixty, ninety final design. We would get to the end of the design, at that point, we'd make a determination on whether or not we would wanna bid what was designed. Uh, we would have the shovel-ready project, uh, to go. And, uh, if we wanted to at that point, we could slow down and, uh, seek, uh, funding from the state or other grants to help build the project. The issue of a P three sits outside of the design and architectural fee, so these are two different processes. The, the issue of a P three in a contract there is a relationship with an entity who submits that was looking to enter into a partnership with the city to, to construct and operate a facility. Those P threes could involve, this could involve designing. Uh, however, as you all, uh, may recall, on May third of, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, there was an adoption of an approval to do the design under resolution ninety-three twenty-three. Uh, specifically, that was to approve an agreement with Benoni Associates to provide final design services for JCPark improvements. In the not exceed amount of five hundred seventy-three thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars, and to authorize the city manager to execute such agreement. So we had already, already been, we had already started down the road of the design. So there's, so anyone who's looking to, to build and operate a facility for us, there's no need for them to incorporate the design into their, uh, P three submittal. Because you all had already authorized us to enter into an agreement to begin that, uh, those design services. Uh, it was pulled from consent by council member Snipey, there was a lengthy discussion. Uh, and then upon conclusion of that discussion, uh, it passed eight to nothing. So it was a unanimous, uh, vote to move forward with the design contract with Benoni, uh, for JCPark. In the design contract, oh, and that was in resolution ninety-three twenty-three for everybody who's looking for the, for those documents. In the design contract for, uh, for JCPark, uh, it's specifically in, uh, in the contract to include, uh, numerous, uh, activities related to getting that park to a shovel-ready, uh, project. It includes, uh, surveying, geotechnical engineering, environmental res- uh, resource, uh, survey, civil engineering, landscape architecture, architectural design, marine investigation, marine design and engineering, and civil engineering. Just about every step of the process we have taken in JCPark. We have had residents email us, send us emails and come to the podium questioning what we are doing. Everything that my administration is doing is doing pursuant to this contract that we were authorized unanimously, uh, and, and, and given direction to move forward. So we have had, uh, residents upset and concerned about the geotechnical survey, we've had residents in concern upset about the survey on the ground when the survey showed up, the marine word. Uh, and, and now as part of, when we went to the thirty percent design, we took that to the community. We've had residents object to that, and now we're at the point of submitting permits. And so, I just wanna make sure that the community is aware, all of this is part of the process of designing the park. And none of it is out of the norm for what we do at any other park. So the same exact process of deploying back in the October town is the same process that we followed for all of our Go-Bon parks. Uh, there was a request for a specific example of when we do permitting before having a contract for construction. I can tell you right now, uh, we have Tropicana Park in permitting with the D E P. We have approved site plan permits for Tropicana Park with the city, and, um, we are, we do not have a construction contract in hand. When we get those permits in hand, we go to bid and we construct it. Same thing exists for, uh, Lake Need Park, we have a site plan permit in hand, an army core permit in hand, a South Florida water management permit in hand. But we have no bid on the street to construct Lake Need Park. So doing permitting as part of the design process is the normal course of process. So doing permitting as part of the design process is the normal course of process for engineering and architectural services. I can understand if you are not for the project, I can understand if there are things in the project you don't like, but I want to assure the community that what our consultant is doing is not outside of the norm. So I, I understand the concerns, but nothing is being rushed, it is following the normal course and is pursuant to the contract that was, uh, adopted by council and my staff is administrator. Uh, as it relates to, uh, the Gakla flag, uh, I was advised by my parks director, uh, that our project manager, Boar, uh, Kinley Moore, uh, spoke with the resident, uh, who came up to speak tonight and, uh, did not say why are you asking, I was advised that he told him, uh, we are not at the point of picking the site for the flag and likely there will be several options available, uh, as we get to further down into the design as far as aesthetics and low key. In regards to the Burrowing Owl grant, um, I wanna commend, uh, Mr. Boe came and spoke, um, and I, I will say what I've said the night that I, um, pulled the item from the agenda. I support the friends of wildlife, I support this grant, I support all the efforts related to bringing it to us. My staff member who has been, uh, tasked with bringing this forward has been on the phone with the DEP, uh, continuously since, uh, the day that it was pulled. We have identified a, uh, land, uh, an accredited land trust, we have, uh, not only identified a primary but also a secondary, we have notified the state, uh, they are letting us know, uh, now what would need to be done, uh, to amend the agreement, and we are working through that process with them. We still have been given assurance that, uh, this is not going to jeopardize our funding, and as soon as we, uh, finalize getting the lands, uh, getting the funds to purchase the land and put them in the accredited, uh, land trust, um, we will bring that agreement back before you. Uh, so again, uh, full support of the program, full support of our efforts in terms of wildlife, it's just the execution of this that we are, um, getting. In, in regards, uh, to the fees, uh, at JCPark, I know, uh, there was some discussion about that, um, you know, at the, at the committee, the whole.
You mean Lake Kennedy Park?
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Fees at Lake Kennedy Park.
Fees at Lake Kennedy Park, yeah, re- regarding the tennis Pickleball. Um, after the meeting, uh, was concluded, our parks director had sent, uh, members of city council, um, a resolution that was passed, uh, that, unfortunately, and, uh, we apologize for not having this, this ready at the, the meeting, but, uh, through Resolution 216 dash 21, uh, a previous city council had already adopted fees, uh, for the use of the tennis courts, uh, at the Yakla and, and established tennis membership fees, uh, for that facility, which was only a four-court facility, uh, with limited parking. And, uh, you can, that resolution specifically says that open playground robbing, uh, would be $6 per person when you come, so that's kind of your drop-in rate. A couple's resident fee was $475 per year, couple non-resident was $600 a year, single resident was $300 a year, single non-resident was $400 a year. I believe the reason we didn't hear from the tennis folks that night was because the tennis folks have already been paying between $400 and $600 to utilize the Yakla and the facility that we built at Lake Kennedy, uh, is, is much bigger and has way more amenities. Um, we are still going to be working through, uh, getting the fees, uh, several models run regarding the Pickleball side and these fees that were already approved for tennis, and as stated during that cowl, I will bring to you all, uh, several of those models so that we can figure out where we would like to be, uh, with our, with our fees. But there already is a resolution adopted by council, um, setting many fees related to parks and recreation, uh, services, and, and that is Resolution 216 dash 21. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you for the, uh, clarification. Now open up, uh, is there any council discussion, uh, on citizens and what the county on recovery?
Thank you, and thank you, Mike, for that, uh, explanation of several topics. Just for a little more clarification on JCPark, uh, permitting, the application for permits related to the recovery process. Learning this today, I did ask the question about, you know, it seemed that at 60%, seemed to be the trigger for these applications to be made, is that the case of the projects that you mentioned as examples?
In, in most cases, you submit for permits at 30%.
30%.
So waiting till 60% was done specifically because we had, uh, made a promise to the community that we would bring the 30% design to them to see if there was any other thing that was, needed to be added that they wanted, you know, to include. Um, I don't know specifically if any other things were added at, between the 30 and 60, uh, but in most cases, you submit your permits at the 30% line up.
What if there were any changes made after the applications are made or after the 60% time lined up to a point of constructive contract? You know, how do you, how do you modify, is there?
It's a permit amendment, you would, if, if you've already received the permit, then it's a permit amendment, you file a court amendment to that, permit, permit modification is what it, you know, what is called in the, in the engineering and architectural world. Um, if, if you're doing it while you're going through design, you just make it part of your submittals.
You know what I mean, it's because. I mean, how do you give an entire council, yeah? I think so, all take care of everything, just let not tell you when the government says. They don't even have a stone.
Yeah. I think we're gonna have a. I was up in Tampa, I saw the old part of town, like, um, and you go there, it's cool, it's like nice and cool, you get, they have brutalist architecture, the concrete, like that one parking garage thing. And it's like, I don't know, three stories or five stories. It's nice. The old part, the old part.
Is it about jail?
Huh?
Is it about jail?
Yeah, it's near the police station. They also got it walled off, yeah, you go to the police station, they'll cross over, then you go to that, so you got like, three blocks of CIA, you know, that, that one hotel was at.
The fire station, right?
I don't know, I'm not sure, that, um, Kennedy Street and, um, Kennedy was Lafayette until they assassinated Kennedy in Dallas and named it Kennedy, because they knew it was gonna be in Tampa, they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't let him do it in Tampa. So they took their Lafayette Street name to Kennedy, one month after the assassination. You can still feel it, I was dealing with these guys at the hotel, you can feel, still feeling how they drag their feet on that, you know? I think that's, you guys got it all changed up here now. There's no one in the parking lot. Oh, did you see me, my videos where I did the straightaways? The signals?
I saw a video of you in the fire park.
Oh, yeah, that was good, I do the, um, signals, it goes from here, they park behind there, straight, just like some spots through the bush, goes all the way down through the fire station where you park, and you can line it up easy, you get, you have trees and then different things.
You have one over there, huh?
Huh?
You really get into that, huh?
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, that's the thing I noticed about you, you guys have, have those things for whatever, or not you guys, but, you know, it's everywhere used, that's a TLC. Oh, yeah, we did that. Yeah. They painted a lot of the cars, didn't they? Or switched them out. Did you get a white car too? Did, did, what?
What did I get?
Did you get a white car?
Sure.
And you paint it yet?
No.
Are you gonna keep it?
And, um, and it's double white.
Guys, no one back there anymore, no one's like walking around. It's crazy. I guess, I probably messed something up. I don't know, I don't think it's a secret though, straight lines.
Got a lot of vans, eh, you like the vans?
Yeah, man. Ooh, this guy's gone. Oh my God, I don't believe it, they got rid of all, they don't have anyone in the parking lot. I probably messed up with the straightaways. There we go. Hey, how's it going? My mom was, like.
No, there isn't one until June, I don't think. Oh, yes, there is, every meeting, every meeting I have to.
I probably messed up the straightaway thing. I didn't mess it, I didn't mess it up today, I went straightaways and, uh, and now there's someone back there and they blocked it, they got that thing blocking. I didn't think it was a, a thing, I mean, you know, or it's, like, you're supposed to see it. Or something. You look a little tired.
Which one?
Oh, so you guys get contact lenses that are small pupils, or maybe not doing it now, it's a little small, but these other cops, it's just they happen to wear glasses, right? And they decide, they're like Marilyn Manson, right? They get contact lenses and they're small fingers, so it's always focused. They don't have any problem, I know that's what they're doing. Cause I see them wearing one, I need to get those. And then they decide, I don't even care, we're not even gonna make it, the pupil looks big, like we're just gonna keep it tiny, I don't care. That's what, that's what they do. You know, like, if you wear glasses, you can just wear, um, small pupils, it looks through an aperture. Like, if you have good con- contact lenses, and then you don't have to mess around, like, if I got better glasses than this, then I'll crash my shopping cart and do stuff or whatever, you know, it's not like you're playing hard, but my depth perception, I have to get used to it. I don't like it, but this way, and then you don't need sunglasses either. That's probably why that, in the FDA, I believe last I read, it was like messing with everyone, like Michael Jackson, or, I mean, or not, maybe Marilyn Manson, but, they cracked him. Have you seen the Karen Reed case up in Massachusetts?
Which one is that?
Um, you know, the one, one, where she, you know, the cop that got run over in the snow, but really they probably killed her in the house, it's all come out. The one I was doing, you know. I forgot the handbag thing from, from Bill, the FBI, like I thought, like I, I'm gonna bring it, get handled, to deal with you guys.
You ever think about going back to Massachusetts?
Maybe, not, not today, no, no. What about you, you're gonna go in, up in the snow, right?
Uh, actually work, I, you know, I got a job, so I'm staying here.
Huh?
I got a job, so I have to stay here.
You're gonna stay here, yeah. There's no one in the parking lot. At least always be people in the parking lot. There's no one in the parking lot. So what is it, where is everyone? They just don't, like, where is everyone? They used to be here before the eclipse. I wanna tell this guy something. I wanna tell this guy something. Man, I wanted, dude, I wanna tell you something before you go. I wanted to tell you something. Yeah, you're one of my mom's friends from Chicago. Like, we, we're from Southern Illinois, so she's doing all... She had Chicago, that was her big, even though it was Southern Illinois. But um, all the Chicago stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, when I was a little kid. We had um, oh god, yeah, I first figured out when I was three years old or two years old and stuff. Those are the stressful times, man. Like a killer president bugging our house. I could tell, that's when I first realized. Thinking it's gonna get better than it's um, than it's Bobby Kennedy. Has it over? Now, but, that was the British, probably, that was number six. They had to give the go ahead, they had to give the go ahead.
Never know, never know in the British.
Not the first one, but the second one, and then they knew they had to keep quiet. That's my whole thing, I just say that, you know? There's no one here, man. I'm the only one. So do you have um, Lucas, you have a septic system or are you like, are you like, are you, I mean, are you like out?
Those are personal questions.
Yeah.
Those are personal questions.
It's so funny, N O L, N O L. You what?
They're out on the bad cop range. You ever been out on the bad cop range?
Oh, you mean out in the farmland? Oh, that's cool, yeah, that's the area.
You should probably start filming out there with them.
Really? They're gonna do something?
Plenty of interesting people to film.
Yeah. I went up to Palm, Palm Beach Drive and got some of those places, I missed that, I didn't, never did that before.
If you walk around Palm Beach, I think, I think you'll be very receptive to people.
Palm Beach Drive, you mean?
Palm Beach Boulevard.
Yeah, yeah.
It's next to Palm Beach Drive.
Okay, oh yeah.
You go to like shores? Put people out there.
Yeah, I'm looking to see if I can catch them, baby. I'm trying to get the Navy, Navy tunnelman. Navy, Navy tunnelman, Navy tunnelman. It's all in the... Or that, or they're gonna make it look like that. I think they already got it, like they got... They got gravel in the bottom of their pants, they, they're already doing that, you know, I mean, like, they're already ahead. There's several steps ahead of what you think.
Thought you said that last November.
Certain steps ahead.
Thought you said last November.
As soon as I get up on my seat, baby.
Well, let's see.
Not only you, but those poor slobs making thirteen dollars an hour. That pisses me off. If you need more money, go to work at the ice cream counter like my daughter. She leave me, she go to Florida and then... You know, I just spoke to my daughter, I said, if you wanna live in the richest town, you better date a guy with a Ferrari, don't come home.
Oh yeah. They're just watching today, they're, they're there, they're like hidden, I think they're like... I think they're Heidi's spot or something. I think like this.
No. Yeah, we normally have a B C, come on, we have a B C.
Wait, we gotta... Eyes is so cool. It's so cool here. The eclipse. Yeah, it's not pretty. Even though it's dry, man. Let me see. Damn, man, she's good. Oh yeah, yeah, they're sparklers. You can probably read sparklers, right? They're so good, you could probably read them. I gotta have like a thing. There we go, there's that guy, he came in. I'm gonna miss this. Don't make call. We'll see you later. We'll see you guys.
Nice meeting you, thank you.
It's gonna be cool in August. I guess it's really hot. Oh yeah, they're not in the parking lot, no one's in the parking lot. It is a little hot. And here, there's that one, oh, she's gonna do that.
So what's, what kinda editing you do? You just uh, let that thing run or?
Yeah.
You put it on your...
Yeah, cause all my best stuff. Well, you know what it is, or you don't wanna know.
Yeah.
You've already asked and you forget, and then you don't know. You just talk.
So you mean you just leave the hour footage on and you just upload it and?
You just talk, well, you should write comments and beg, beg for it, you ask, I'll give you everything if you want it. Just gotta like get online and...
You gotta subscribe.
Make a comment, if you actually get on YouTube and say you want all of it. You guys already know that. This is gonna be cool when it's hot, when it's August. They've already got them, they've already got them, and at first I wasn't sure. They got the girls with the Barbie waist, it's like, you think, man, like... So I always knew, but then it's like Barbie all the way. Like thin, and they're still wearing their pants, they're um, big waist. But they got... And they're gonna, they're getting ready for it when it's hot. And they'll be out for like the lizard, they'll be like, quick, and they don't get hot. Cause they're skinny, they're all... I used to be sub anorexic.
You look, you look like you lost a little weight or something.
I did, maybe. Maybe. Yeah, I was anorexic, sub anorexic.
Actually working out.
I got down to one forty-five. I would do six hundred calories a day, at the most for a while. Like uh, and then I was weight...
Just two Snickers?
Then I was weightlifting. Now I'd go...
You know, the oversized look is in now.
What are they?
Go over, oversized?
That's why it's so clear, cause it's so hot, right?
It's a little warm.
Cause it's um... That's gonna be cool, everything's a melt. Melt off. So I, I figured out like um, I got, I have one video with um, Prince Johnson, that's his first name, Prince.
Prince.
Liberia.
Like Prince?
You know, like Charles Taylor, he wasn't with Charles Taylor, I mean, off to the side, but... He's just like pure United States Army, they, they trained him in the um, military police training. So he took over, he was the first one to get in Monrovia. And just, just tuck it, and you got, you got President Bell, he's actually, actually in a court martial, but he got the beer, Budweiser, refrigerator and all the other stuff. But you can tell he's like coming from the jungle, he's like thick, so he got the thing, and it's still like that Vietnam thing, like, this is only, what was it, nineteen ninety? He's got the whole aptitude. Yeah, so I think you, you wear a tight shirt, like cotton, like hard cotton, like up against your skin is better than the other thing way loose. Cause if you have anything that gets wet, that's further out, that makes it so the humidity just gets trapped in there. So you get that, you know, all the sweat and all this stuff trapped with a cotton shirt. Linen works too, but it doesn't stretch as much. This one's too big, you get it tied up against the skin, and you don't want it to go away from the skin, cause it's gonna, when it's not touching, it's gonna be... This one's too big, you get it tied up against the skin, and you don't want it to go away from the skin, 'cause it's gonna, when it's not touching, it's gonna be. It won't be cool, like, no one touches your skin again, it's cool to touch, but you're losing all that coolness, like out and away from your skin, so you have this inner layer, that's like, that cotton, that's hardened, like right up against your skin. Then the outer layer can just, um, waft around that stuff, in the jungle. You have to wear that stuff anyway, 'cause it gets crashed, but. So I gotta get some, um, giant polyester shirts, like, um, I, I never liked that, but I think it's what you get for the big outer layer. Yeah, see, guys, like, um, trimming bushes anyway. Kind of a style. And I think, because the air needs to go through it, otherwise, like, if the cotton or whatever gets wet, and then the air doesn't go through it. You want that wafting outer layer to be.
Not wafting, I'm not sure.
It wouldn't go with a police uniform, really. It wouldn't go. So I guess they run out of their shoes, right, they're genuinely, people have like flip flops, I mean.
Should be fine, 'cause most people wear socks.
No, I mean, high up, they, they got.
Two separate things in it.
Flip flops, so.
Oh, so if you wear any of your shoes, you're gonna be hurting yourself, you wouldn't really socks on.
They, they practice barefoot, I used to run barefoot, five miles a day, from my house to Harvard Square, and then I take the train. Back to JFK, and then, then it's like a three quarters of a mile walk back.
Oh, is Harvard Square next to JFK?
No, it's at, it's, it's five miles away, it's at the end of line, well, not the end of line, but it's like the red line goes through. Um, my house is near JFK, so I'd run five miles to Harvard Square, and then get, then hang on, get on the train, come back.
You gotta run to Faneuil Hall?
Faneuil Hall. I kinda, no, it's weird, like, no, I'm old, old Boston, so I don't like that. No, I don't like Faneuil Hall, and I don't like the other, I got issues, my family found good Boston, okay.
Family?
Yeah, yeah, the Adam Hops. Adam Hops, he's with the original guys, but he never got on.
Yeah, no, what year, um, is it on, uh?
Um, sixteen thirty, yeah, sixteen thirty, so he came over on the Winthrop fleet.
Not the Mayflower?
No, that was ten years earlier, but his sons married those girls this time. That was ten years before.
Oh, on Plymouth?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was ten years before, they, they kept moving.
Up, up the little rock, the bigger one?
I don't know, yeah, they got a rock over there. But he didn't come out of, he didn't actually come downtown, he stayed in Charlestown, that's the original camp.
They didn't have downtown back in sixteen thirty?
The original camp's across the water, across the Charles, in Charles.
The pond.
And so he stayed over there, didn't go over to the other guys, and he was a cattle commissioner, for a long time, so he definitely bonged over them. He has a church of all cows.
And, and the cattle too?
Cattle commissioner, yeah, cow, cow commissioner.
No, that was on Noah's Ark.
Gotta keep it on. And so he stayed up there, and so he never got, when he moved on, he was kind of more, a little more north, so that was like decent Salem and all, that was the real.
Well, you gotta watch out for the witches.
Boston was kinda trash, you know, that's, that was a weird circumstance.
You gotta watch out for those young witches.
Yeah. But that's how I deal with it, that's how I deal with it, they start framing me up there.
The witches?
No, the, the, what do you call them?
What about Whiting?
No, no. Um, probably, but I don't, I didn't know who he was.
Be careful with Whiting, who's the boss?
I saw him over at, um, probably saw him at Kestrel, but I don't know. But, um, like, it's all over the place. Like, yeah, 'cause I was, um. Yeah, I couldn't crack that up, yeah. That was a while. I used to, after everything I went through, it was like entangled, you know? Everyone, everyone, now I'm thinking even this other guy, he's coming, everything's in my six, with that FBI stuff. They killed a prosecutor. Back in ninety-four, out in West Foxbury, that wasn't those black kids, that was like MI six, and, um, some dirty feds. It was like God knows what, that's what I think, now it is, now it's obvious. A trash guy. Strange view. That Karen Reed case is weird, they're actually kinda nice people too, those cops that did it, or that, that cop house. You never watched that show, right, Boston's Finest?
I live it every day.
You watch?
No, I don't watch it.
Like, it was only before, with that, with that marquee mark, that, one of those Walburger brothers, Walburger, one of those guys. There's something they don't even talk about, they don't even mention it, really. I don't know. So how long have you been here in Cape Coral?
In Cape Coral?
Yeah, or this area.
Which area, this area in total, or in Cape Coral?
Like Lee County and all this.
Probably seven months.
But I, I knew you here before that, seven months.
I live my life seven months at a time.
Yeah, so you guys are gonna.
Oh, well, forget.
Yeah. And you guys are gonna have to retire up on the snow or something, or out far away, right?
Could, but it's snow's down there.
You're not gonna retire here. I don't think that's how they do it, I don't think they will with you guys. I saw that. Oh, you guys know him, you know, you know the CIA ass guy, I call him the ass guy, 'cause he had a, he had a license plate that said ass on it, ass something.
Is his name Kramer?
Down at Lafayette, I don't know, I don't know, he's like, um, yeah, probably, yeah, probably is, yeah.
I think I saw that, Cosmo Kramer.
Oh, good, yeah.
He's got a buddy named Jerry. Jerry's son. She's a little stuck up. George, though.
It's always George.
George out there.
They're like, they're, they're.
How about Newman, the guy that, that guy that hangs out with, the guy that hangs out with, that gas man, the guy.
They had, um, someone, someone had to change something, and settle down, he spent five thousand dollars. On, on me, no, this ass guy, like, a few meetings ago, yeah, beautiful women following, like, all the, all the super, all the news, like, extra news. Everything, he had all the trucks, lots and lots of trucks. All kinds of stuff. And everything, oh, that was during, um, the interview for Kayla. So we're gonna do right in the middle of it, you know what else he did, he had, um, he had the NBC guys dress up, looking exactly like, um, these, you know, fake rednecks. That were doing this racist stuff out at the Kayla Memorial. You know, same kinda hair, same kinda like, looking like Kentucky, or that Adam Sandler movie. I call him Ren Stimpy and Itchy Brother, you know, those guys that used to run parking lots, I think, except, real intense. And they had, he had a guy that looked like him, and you'd think it's him, but the guy is way too tall, and it's like a, on purpose. And they happened to be new, and there's no way. And actually went chasing after him. Well, and then he was running some Blackfeet. He was running some Blackfeet too, so if I gotta look out, 'cause he'll get Denise De Souza. Or someone.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What's happening with all that Ukraine money, I guess they like unleashed it, right?
I'm not sure what your boy is doing with, uh, with Ukraine.
All that money, that's where people went, from Boston.
To Ukraine?
Yeah, yeah, back in the, back in the early nineties. They, they, um, escaped, well, no, I don't know, the only way, I'd hear it's like that, but I don't know. But, no, escaped, but, yeah. Ah, no one out there, man, I'm so lonely, I'm, look at this. Looks to be all these people. There you go, ooh, there they are. Oh, here we go. Maybe they had to stop or something. I don't know, it's great. I think I might be going, I'll see you later. Okay, great. Yeah, I might, but, but probably not. Man, there. Oh, wait. Wait, let me just take this, oh my God, that's gonna be, all right. My dad. It's hot, man. All right, we got all these guys. These guys are great. Maybe I'm not tall. Ah, come on.
What are you, a paparazzi?
Yeah. Yeah, final. Beautiful.
You recording now?
Yeah, yeah, I was recording.
So if somebody doesn't wanna be recorded, do you have to shut it off?
No, everyone else is recording, everyone else has been going around here.
If somebody says they have.
Nah, 'cause like, you know, I look on my video, and it's all these gears, they're going around with their Apple Watch, recording everything, recording.
I don't record people, I'm respectful of people.
I know, so, no one's gonna know it, unless they record, that's the thing, you know, everything's.
Well, you have two people having a conversation, maybe they don't wanna record them.
I think so. Like, um.
Expectation of privacy.
Yeah. You're doing that. There's everything, oh, can you live in a car? If you want to record, that's fine. There you go. Ooh, they're fucking gone, man, no one's here. No one's chased away. I wonder. It's great, it's great, it's great. Sarah called me, oh, wait. All right, you see me? Yeah. Ah. Oh, you guys aren't all together, are you? 'Cause they had to have that car come up to bump, bump this car out of here, right? Otherwise, he would've just, they would've all agreed, you guys aren't all on the same side, it's hard to see the sides, you know?
I'm just a fringe guy.
Yeah, oh, wow. Check him out, man. You gotta get moving, you gotta get moving, it's impossible, I can't figure, you never figure out what's going on here, there's too many levels, as soon as you're watching, it's all about. Like, about what you're thinking, you know what I mean?
It's about what?
It'll all be about what you're thinking, as soon as you're watching, really, I don't know, some analysts could've come in, or just had their cars parked, we're looking at that. But even that, they kinda worked that, you know, it's such, it's just too much, it's just too much, man. It's just too much. Now, who we go? No, hold on. Something, 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 ooh. You can tell. Ooh, 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 they're trying to crack down on this guy. Are they? Where are they? I get this guy. I can't do this guy, man, I'm gonna figure it out, man. Your tag. Run that one. Yeah, but I don't even do it regularly, of course I do it, 'cause. Aggressive, they don't say like, here's the new thing, they come in. Who muscle you out of your state? That's what they would do, man.
We're, we're, we're having a private meeting, you're, uh.
Okay.
Yes. I know, we're, this, this, let's have it, this.
Wouldn't that be? Yeah, something. Man, look, that's all covered up now. God, man. It's all a mess now. And I hope I didn't fuck it up in my video about. Well, it went, maybe we wouldn't all know everything, and, something. Look, my straightaway, he's, that is a damn obvious. They got a little, get a little pokey hole, watch, see how. They got a little, get a little pokey hole. Watch, see how they overlap it. That maybe doesn't matter either. Careful, you don't have any little peaky holes. Oh, no. Actually, you just gotta be taller. Stand on something. Maybe stand on a bench, that's what they'd be doing. Here. Now they change. Yeah, we're just really into it, right? Oh, yeah, then you have here. Man, see the tops? You guys see? That's pretty high up. The cheese hat. He's standing up here with a cheese hat. God, man. You had to close it down, man. Oh, there we go. I have no idea. Oh, cool. You saw that? Oh my god, yeah. Ooh, that was weird. Oh, the nerves, cuz there's this. That person wants to leave this way. See, other circles at first. Right? That was weird. Who knows? I don't have any idea. It's a riddle, wrapped in enigma, you know, mystery and enigma. There you. See my mom, the Chicago thing. That guy's from Chicago. That doesn't have work. Damn, why was that car went that way? I'm gonna get a newsletter. Because otherwise, I'm saying CIA this or that. And I just gotta have that, so it's like, not, it's like, it's not like I'm saying it new. It's just gonna hang around. Right? Cuz otherwise, it is weird. It's probably like certain protocols for it, actually. Oh my god, they are. That's weird. Oh, there he is. There you are. Hey, you must know a lot of stuff, man. Remember when I said that? You know a lot of stuff. It's getting hot, too. Damn, man. Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, god, man.
You have a good day, Atlanta, hold.
Alrighty.
All the big bosses will be coming out later. You can interview, should interview some of them.
Oh, yeah, what happened, um, what's his name, um, that one that's the sheriff that?
Get them, get them here.
Got it, he's cold. Baby. Yeah. Ah, what is going on, man? What are they doing? Oh, he's gonna walk right there. And then we got this guy. This guy over there, I was gonna run back, oh, there we go. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, goodness. Hang on, this is weird. None of those books are so high. Something's going on. Man, Mrs. Jones, Mrs. Jones. Okay, that's what they would do. You know what they would do? Cuz they never do this. They never like run it. Except for like Blue Monday or something, they run it. They take everything off. But they usually, keep everything crazy, cluttered, and then they add their new stuff in. Why, this is like, crazy. These are some crazy stuff. What? What? What, what do you want? For what?
Come here, I wanna ask you a question.
Well, just ask him from here.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Just come here. It's very personal. I'm really not kidding.
Um. Hold on. Let me go over here. Nah, I don't believe it. I don't believe people anymore, cuz it's like a personal, right? Tell, what is it about? Is it about, what's it about?
I just have a question for you.
Like, what kind of personal stuff?
I watch your YouTube channel. I just have a question.
Oh, you do, okay.
Come here. I don't wanna speak.
Ah. Give me some comments on my YouTube. I don't wanna mess around with these guys.
I'm not messing around.
No, no, you know how it is.
No, I don't know how it is.
I'll talk to you sometime, though, but I'm not in the mood to, no, it's getting weird here right now. I'm getting my spidey sense, you know what I mean?
No, I don't know that. I don't have that.
I'm a survivor, man. So maybe some other day.
I just am curious about your channel, that's all.
Yeah, you watch it. Just keep watching it. You gotta watch it, cuz that's what I, that's the only thing I know, cuz I've been out here. You can watch me. I just, all I did is I just kept looking and looking. Couldn't figure it out. And I was here.
What are you looking for?
Year and a half. Well, figure out what's going on first. I know undercover. And I started doing police up in Boston. At first, I wasn't even in police. It was, um, because they're messing with my kids and, and doing something. They, oh, yeah, I did Boston Public Schools. I did, I did like hard IP meetings. That was like a, we were like the eight hundred pound gorilla in Boston Public Schools. We could do, we had, I, we took on, we have like four administrators and two lawyers in the room. We crushed them, me and my wife, you know? With no lawyer on our side. And then, um, the police jumped up all the stuff. They had raping girls up there. Um, you know, that's what they got going on from Massachusetts. So I got in to actually doing police. Cuz they wouldn't let me have protest signs. So I started telling the police. And that's the usual thing, Archer. And then I got off, I found undercover police, okay? Um, and that's the first ones I found, like, or the big ones downtown, crossing. I saw this everywhere. And I, I live near Methan Hill Mile, and I saw the feds were bringing all this stuff in. And like, some of the homeless guys are fake, some of them are feds. So I just got into the undercover. And then I come down here, like, like a year ago, you know, just before, um, the eclipse. And it's like, what? And I'm like, everyone is running apart, you know, fake, fake, you know? Like this, and I know, like, other people, um, and they're not even necessarily hiding it. And so I started doing it. You can watch my channel, you'll see it. And if you want the rest of the footage. Uh, yeah, maybe, but, but actually, on my video, so what I do, a video, try and verify it. And you see, it's all, all wrong. Every time, I'm always right. Very rarely do I make a mistake. I can do certain things, but they'll fake you out on so many levels. This is like the CIA stuff. You know the CIA took over on the eclipse, right? They moved everyone out. Um, they were putting two billion dollars a year in the parking lot, probably. Just have people running around the parking lot. You know, maybe, I'm thinking, I'm guessing, ten thousand people, like, ten hours a day, times ten thousand for Lee County and Charlotte, you know, probably going all the way down. It doesn't go up the chain, but it stops way before that Tampa didn't even know, when the eclipse hit. Um, you know, so I'm thinking that. And if you do that, you might get two billion a year, you know, just to get people busy. And but that's like all the parking lots, running out of furniture, equipment, infiltrating every office, it's all. And it's already, they got it set. And it's like, you know, that's when we bring Gary to the rocks, you know? It's real estate and all that stuff. So I got that, that stuff to build on. And it's just this beautiful mafia, they call it mafia, but you know what I mean? This is like, everything watching, some, look, it's so cool about it. And cuz they're not relying on, like, time, so they just want this people stuff. They don't trust you like time, guys, you know, the way, you gotta fight the machine to get away from that sort of time, you know what I mean? Like I said, they had all the straightaways, like, in, um, a few weeks ago, you know, you can see where, you know, not, not just streets, I mean, but like between bushes, you see, prolonged, or whatever they do. And that might just be a habit. And then they even catch you with a, a telescope lens way down there, and they're seeing, look, you know, you first come down, you look like that, you know? Just that. And they'll be pinging you, all the computer stuff would be profiling you all the time. And this place is probably old, old and classic, even, it was always CIA. You had that guy originally CIA. And he was, um, representative senator and something, he even came out of CIA two thousand four or something like that. Um, so it's, uh, it's like, um, but they've always probably done, done the real estate thing and, uh, and, um, like open houses, you go to a house and like, oh, everyone loves them stuff. And you might go to a con shop, and you're good for second party. They'd be like, oh, yeah, I'm gonna still get the house, or it's a, you know, they probably always play people before, and all just mess it together. It's a magical thing. Then it's Ukraine money. It's gotta be Ukraine money. I used to think all their drugs and prostitution, they were taking us out, like, there is kid prostitution, I mean, prostitution all part of it. But it wasn't, cuz there's like, where is the guy going in? You see all the action, like, they, they do and they go. Um, but, and, you know, well, it's always like, I can't figure it out. I always was a parent, I played prostitution with parents, and even the kids stuff. I mean, it's like, so many couples messed up, like, you'd be taking a girl, a little girl, like, hey, you're gold. And she's like, scares, get to her guy, or scares, and like that, just go by. You know, profile guys, they have a little like camera on her, or whatever they do. Going way back, you just get this like, like, profile. And then, and other guys that play with them, dangling, and, um, cuz this is, this is the big thing. So I don't know, you guys are up to it. And I gotta get a little, like, I don't get some. You see, that's where I'm going with, with my YouTube channel. Um, and I don't know what's gonna, okay, see. So there's some other thing, though. You know, not here. And the thing is, you, you verify it, you verify it from the story. Like afterwards, you can see where it is. And it's these all-hokey citigrees. Where is everything? Where is everything? They're gone. You know, I was out here a few months ago. They don't let them out. And today, they get the whole thing. Instead of all these people walking, they're, they're just empty, you know what I mean? And you see the pattern, where I record a lot, I can get the pattern. You know, you know, when Taylor got murdered, that girl, and then, they can't really handle that, right? I don't think they did it, but it's like, I think it's more like a structure. I think you got, you got more intelligence than me. You got your mind six, the British, I mean, that's what I'm really dealing with. I think it's CIA, there's factions in that, you know? Like, um, so, cuz this is gonna be a, um, my theory is, my skating theory is, it's Navy, you got Navy, it's Navy intelligence. And that's what got me down here. And they, and they kind of, you know, encourage me, gotta be gone. Um, these certain things, I see in my old videos. And, um, and they got the tunnels or the whatever. You know, this is gonna be big drone base and whatever. And they got the structure, you know, or maybe some of the entrances around downtown Fort Myers, these are a lot of stuff. And so it could be, god knows what's going on. And every, it's a period, you think, it has to be revealing. It has to be, but they might not, they might've been really clean about stuff and not done a lot. You think, oh, this must be where they're bringing all the, you would never know. You could have the guys coming down here, and then out there, they won't even know. Like, I got a box, and there's another box, and they got, they could've been going to Texas or whatever, you know? We could have, um, I'm thinking they wouldn't have too much smuggling in here. It really is coming from the Texas border. Because like, then if you have a problem, you got kids or something, or they do water, it's demoralizing, you know what I mean? So I probably, I would guess, you don't have that, except for like the hiding stuff. You had the Navy's all here. Yeah. And it's gonna be a thing like that. And they're gonna invest. And that's why they, um, you wanna, um, hold on, hold on, I'm trying to, you wanna know, right? What? 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 Oh. Whoa. Hmm, oh shit, man. This is fucking weird. Is it raining? Yeah. They went to heal. Oh, it is raining. She must've seen where the wind check, like, angry. She's so fake. That's some fake shit, too. Mm hmm hmm. Need to spark that one. Probably is. There's Sparkly. They're trying to set me up out there. They're setting me up out there. That Sparkly hat one. Trying to set me up to. Lucas, I gotta, um, report a crime, some danger. They're setting me up to jump me out there. This Barkley hat one. She was telling me to come up to her car. Leave the camera on the tripod, far away. Go up to her car. And she's doing this stuff. And then. What? What'd you say? Oh, so if I'm gonna get attacked, I should go home?
Walk away before it falls in the sky.
She was threatening me, too. So Lucas, you said it too, right?
What I did.
You threatened me, too.
Who did?
You told me, like I said, someone's gonna assault me. You told me to go home. Then she told me the same thing. I got it on video.
Playback. You playback?
Ooh, sorry, buddy. Haven't seen you in a while. You're back. Haven't seen you before. Are you new?
Yup. I'm gonna go to the restroom now.
You gotta do that. Oh, I gotta tell him. So I have a problem that's a police problem. Um, I've been threatened. Lucas just threatened me, too, an officer Bush. Um, they're, they're setting me up to attack me. Okay. I told Lucas and Officer Bush, and they both said, then I should go home. So what, so what's up?
Are you speaking to me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm handling a work email right now.
Okay, well, I'm in danger right now.
Well, you're safe now. Stay by me. I'll keep you safe.
You got that, man. Ooh, they got it, man. Means I can go, is he? Oh, jeez. Look, he's gonna just go. He didn't go that far. Why, why, why? Oh, God, there he goes. Down in there. Yeah. Ah, that goes down that way. It was all fake. Um, so are you the fire chief?
He is.
Yeah, I'm the acting fire chief.
Uh, are you, so that's not insane?
No, he's different.
Oh, what's wrong with the chief? Um, I think my phone wasn't working. Um.
Chief, you're up.
Are you talking to me or are you talking to him?
To him, he's the chief.
Camera didn't work, gotta go again.
I guess, well, I don't know. Cause um, um. Okay, so, so he's not, he didn't have a problem or anything?
No, no problem at all. Actually, he's doing a great service for the city. He's helping out with those FEMA flood insurance issue. Did you follow that?
No, no.
It's a big issue with the FEMA flood insurance, so he's helping out with that, so.
Okay, cause I got jumped and attacked when I went to the fire station to ask about it.
I don't have any knowledge of that, buddy.
Oh, you don't?
No.
Like, oh, so, it's okay if I go to the fire station and ask people this?
Uh, yeah, you just can't go in there. I think if you'd like to coordinate an interview, you gotta do that through the public affairs office.
So you do know about the incident, right?
Familiar, uh, that, I don't know who she is, like, I don't, not just.
Yeah, yeah, that was me. So what did you know about it? Have you seen the video?
Uh, I have seen the video.
You have?
But I don't know who she is.
Yeah, that's right, because you don't see me on video. Yeah, that was me. So I got attacked.
Do you need something?
Um, yeah, yeah, uh, sorry, oh, they knew I was going there, um.
Do you mind wanting to ask the police chief?
I asked, he doesn't want to talk to me.
Probably doesn't want to talk to you? Why not?
Yes, I gotta like, I'd have to do, it's sort of like, I have to do years of research to figure out why anything goes on here. Even then, you don't know.
I hope you're doing well.
No, I was getting attacked, I got my life cut, yeah. Now Lucas and Officer Bush are threatening me. Physically threatening me now.
Who's?
Officer Bush and Lucas. Let me tell the mayor.
I don't have any knowledge of that.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, they're threatening me now. Um, someone was setting me up outside, um, to attack me, and that might be true or not, but I told Officer Bush and Lucas, they won't talk to me.
One of these gentlemen in the, with the batches owners, they can help you right there.
But they're in on it, they, um,
No.
Officer Bush. We depend on you to be, you to be like, um, I'm just joking, man. This guy's so cool. But, he's my role model, you know? He'll be like you in my home.
Thank you very much for.
You're gonna, you're gonna handle it, right?
I know your schedule's crazy.
Man, what'd you guys, something happened this last week or something, didn't you? You guys got the thing. Hey, he's. Mm-hmm. Hey, um, the mayor said I should talk to you about this.
Okay.
So, um, someone was setting me up to attack me, and that might be true or not, but I did.
Hold that thought, I'll be right with you. I'm right in the middle of a business discussion here. As soon as we get there, I'll be glad to talk.
I will be, I'm the supervisor, I will come, I will come and I will talk with you if you want, I'll be more than happy to address everything for you.
Um, I don't know, it's kind of an emergency.
Oh, yeah, if you give me, like, give me like thirty seconds.
Well, Officer Bush said that I should just leave if someone's gonna attack me.
If, yeah, but.
So, in, in, like.
Just like two seconds.
Is she gonna be in trouble?
Come on, yeah, come on, let's go talk.
She gonna be punished?
Go ahead. I'm gonna go take your report, let's go, let's go.
Right.
I gotta, if you would like a report, I gotta go.
Wait, he's way boss here, right? Um, now you're getting kind of aggressive, just.
No, no, I wanna, I would like.
Stand back a little bit.
I would like to take your report.
Aggressive when it comes to helping people.
I don't want that guy.
Let the record reflect, let all five of your followers see that.
You want, would you like for me to take a report for you, or no? Would you like for me to take a report for you?
Let me get those hands.
I do know sign language if that's what you need. All right, is there, is there anything I can help you with, or no? If you don't want a report, that's fine.
Why is that guy even talking to me? I don't want to talk to him.
We're here to help people, you, you said you needed help, he's here to help.
He should be in charge, he gotta take charge, man.
I'm in charge, usually when you're in charge, you tell people to do this, do this stuff for you, so, he's doing it for me.
No, he's not.
Okay. See, checking out my Jordans, huh? You like them?
The Jordans, oh, yeah, yeah.
Custom made.
Oh, they are.
Yeah? Not many chiefs rock those, right?
Not many.
Yeah.
They're comfortable, they work.
Aw, man, you could play the NBA Finals in them, but you can't.
Man, these guys funny.
Got one of these in these.
Yeah. Yeah.
Even other people wore the Jordans. I think Richard Kobe wore Jordans. Many wore Kobe's.
Man, what happened, what happened to you guys? Like in the last couple of weeks, or something, something happened in last week? Something happened, I remember, like.
Something happens every day.
I know, around here, right? Were you here the whole time, you?
Uh, before the eclipse, or something, maybe? He, has he been here the whole time?
Been here?
Yeah. Hey, so what's happened during the eclipse, okay, that Monday?
Department or the council meeting?
Like, there must be some foreign face and thing, okay? So, that Monday when the eclipse happened, all the white cars show up, maybe the day afterward. You guys have every, um, all the, like Marco Island has to park there, you know? And a lot of activity, so it looked like everyone was visiting, and we see a lot of white cars, that must be, oh, we bought a lot of cars, or, we were discussing FEMA, or is it, what's, what's the, is there an announced thing to explain that activity?
Honestly?
Besides my CIA theory that's the CIA did a coup here, you know, I know that, that, but like you asked me to, you must have a.
I'm not sure what in the world you're talking about. Honestly.
Oh, like when, all the new white cars.
New white cars?
You talking about police, I don't know. You talking about black cars?
I'm sorry.
Alright, so you don't know?
No, I don't, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
And what about like, um, during eclipse, when everyone was parked there, and they stayed parked there for all week? I mean, every day they come in. In Marco Island, um, code enforcement.
Here on Earth, I'm not sure what the heck was going on with that eclipse. It really didn't affect operations of us.
Didn't, so you guys have a tunnel that goes from that one building down, down in those trailers to the police station, right?
No.
There was a tell, one guy did a tell.
No, if you go two, you go about six inches deep, you're gonna hit water, man.
That's right. Water and sand is perfect, and then you have the, um, the tunnel, it's made for it, it's like, it's that, that sand, and they get the right equipment, and, um, zoom, you know, you can be from the entrances, but they probably threw us off here. This is, this is a honey pot, man, I think, and I haven't actually studied it, but it's all under that soft sand, ready to go out. That's why they're messing with those mangroves, we're gonna clear all this.
Have you ever, have you ever been on the phone with somebody when you're waiting for a call? And then you get on the phone with somebody else, and you have to tell them, hey, before,
Yeah.
before we get too deep into this, when I get another call,
Yeah.
I have to drop it?
Yeah.
It's kinda like that.
Oh, you gotta be, you wanna be finished with me, it's okay.
When the recess is over.
You've done more than enough.
And the fun is done, I gotta sit back down and.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we can talk up until then.
I know, you're a little weird, dude, they're letting you be, um, kinda, you're telling, you've got a lot of Red Bull.
I get that a lot.
A lot of Red Bull.
You should have seen me a while ago.
You got a Red Bull, and you're like, you're listening to the weights, and they know it's, they're in the Red Bull phase, and they set you out, let, turn you loose out here.
I mean, I call you, I appreciate it.
I know, we're in this Red Bull phase.
I forgot your first name, but anyway.
It's Ken, yeah, Losip, yeah.
Well, as soon as they can see you in the gavel back, we gotta end the fun.
Oh, yeah, yeah. What happened to my guy that, um, um, Robert Welsh, he's not here today?
No, but he's doing a CIA interview.
Yeah. Yeah, oh. Oh, yeah, 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 oh, this is all, I think I, I think I. Um. Yeah, I'll tell you what happened out there, okay?
They're about to start talking, so.
Alright.
Well, let's go.
Yeah.
That would mean you can talk louder.
I will, I may, I just can't be ordered around.
Oh, no, I'm not, no, no, I'm just gonna go out there.
I probably will, I just can't have it as a, um, order.
Oh, okay.
I guess, it's very likely, I was just gonna follow your route, but I don't wanna say it.
Oh, okay.
Because I wanna lose face. I got in this business because I gotta be the guy, you know? You know what cops do, you know how cops are, how they always gotta dominate, and now you gotta do that myself.
Dominant, man.
My mouth is totally dry.
It's crazy.
From panic attacks and stuff. That's the way I can tell. Yeah, alright, you take care, man. So he's okay, right? The fire chief's. He's, he's in on it, he's in on it, I was worried about him. Cause I used to think he's something, because they're setting him up.
I don't know you were worried about him.
Well, he knows, he knows, yeah, I don't know. I think he's like, very, very good. It's a splendid creation you guys have here. It's just, it's, you know, congratulations and.
Thanks, man.
I just like, you know, alright. Were, were you waiting for me to come out or something? It's like that, ooh, they let you back. How long you been back? Oh, no, you guys. Or is that fake? That could be fake. Oh, the other guy's gonna come home and talk to me, but maybe he's sending one to you. That other guy was supposed to come out. Let me see. Excuse me. Just see. Uh, you were coming out, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, just don't order me around, I'll go out there whenever you tell me, whenever you're done, okay?
Right now.
Okay, cool, I'll be out there in two minutes.
Alright.
I just don't be, I'm not ordering around, that's all. So what do you need?
Um.
You're standing really close to me, you're kind of, you're kind of.
I know, when I went, wait, am I standing too close?
Yeah, you're standing really close.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go over here, don't follow me.
Okay, I won't follow you.
You're following me, how can I get further away?
Oh, you wanna go out there, or is there more space out there?
I want you to stop following me, I told you. You said I was too close, I said I was gonna walk away. And I said, don't follow me. You told me I'm too close, now you're following me.
No, you're zooming in.
How do I get farther away from you?
Cause you're zooming in.
No, I'm following, I'm watching your feet, stop doing it. Can I get away from you? Can I get farther away from you, or are you gonna stop following me?
Please do. Please do. What would you like to report today, Kenneth? Kenneth, what would you like to report today? Welcome. Kenneth, this is your last chance before I go back in, if you want to report anything new. Sounds like a no, it sounds like a no, I mean, obviously, we won't have to take a report.
I told the mayor, I told the mayor on you guys. I told the mayor. Yeah. It hope, yeah. There we go. Yeah, I got a clear chair. They're closing it, they're closing it. Ooh, maybe. It's falling out, falling back up. Uh, there we go. Way those cars. Ooh, they put their flags back up. Wait. Their flags were half-staffed when they put them back up, right? Didn't they? Is that right? Weren't the flags half-staffed? I think the flags were at half-staff, but now they're back up. I think that guy. I think. I think. Why are you shaking your head, Lucas? You don't approve? You don't approve?
No, I heard something over here. I'm just shaking my head, it's not like I'm.
Is your body cam on?
Would you like to?
And when did you turn it on?
Would you like it?
Uh, I don't wanna answer that. It's kind of annoying. Especially in, in context of how everything else has gone, it's kind of, like inappropriate. For you to ask that. Is your body cam on? Officer Bush? Is your body cam on too?
Well, she's not really the only one, so it didn't have to be on.
Well, so, she didn't answer, I think it is. I think, or it is, or it wasn't? I didn't say it's her on, I just asked, because I heard it before. Like those other guys, that's. So those other guys are aware.
Wasn't on when we were having just a friendly conversation about.
Well, that's good.
From Boston at sixteen thirty.
Really excited for finding that out, man, it's cows twice.
You turned a little leaf, so now, you know, it seems like it's appropriate for us to turn it on in front of you.
Oh, wait, what happened? I did what?
Here, play back the tape.
Did I do something wrong? I'll put it on YouTube, I can't. Dude, how am I gonna play back the tape when I'm recording, you know how it is?
Oh, no.
He didn't get, you know, like, man, would I have to stop?
iPhone fifteen or? What is that now? iPhone twenty-five or what is this? I'm not an app.
You said I did something wrong? What'd I, what'd I do wrong? You said I turned a leaf.
I didn't say you did anything wrong.
You said I turned a leaf. So I didn't do something wrong?
You did it, didn't you?
Well, what do you say? You think I did something wrong?
Who? Who's on this?
You are tired, aren't you?
Tired.
You're tired. And she doesn't do a thing anymore. You guys are retiring soon, right? They're taking it. They're finna, you guys are in a shape, and they keep it grumpy. They keep it grumpy and weird as you. You gotta retire grumpy. Like, here's your watch, Lucas. Here, like something. You get to retire after, well, they say you retire after seven years.
Is that the number?
Like, I'll know that, I won't be saying. No, I, I'd be like, no, that's a hard job, man. You should retire after seven years.
What was your job? What was your job prior to, uh, being a news anchor?
I was, um, Boston Public Schools.
Oh, that's right, that's right. I think before, was it, you ended up retiring?
Uh, the police started raping kids, they started running stuff and with the feds, and it's like, and they closed it down. People that, people that I know, they're on my side, but they go get their job, they get their two hundred fifty thousand job at the, like at the art museum, that kind of stuff, you know, the girl, she makes sure I don't get jumped. But there's something bad in there. In the town, in the whole area, you know that? There's something, and I had to figure it out, still don't know for sure. There's something, and I had to figure it out, still don't know for sure. Who's that guy? So you gotta walk right up behind me, right?
Stretch my legs.
But that's lying. You're just lying. Can I have a place for you not walking up behind me?
I'm sorry?
Can I, can I get into a position where you're not walking up behind me?
Sure.
Or after you threaten me? Can I not, can I have a, have a situation where you're not coming up behind me after you threaten me? What? I mean, that's very regular, right? And then I got this guy. Like, what is it? Hey, do you still have your body cam on, or is it? Okay, good. Can you make Lucas stop walking behind me and circling me? He threatened me on that, he threatened me with, today.
You know your pockets ripped on your jacket? Do you know that?
Um. No, I don't know that.
Yeah, your, your pockets ripped.
Which one?
Your left one, did you fall down?
How would that rip my pocket?
I don't know if someone like grabbed you or slammed you or something like that.
Well. You said fall down, now it's like grabbing your.
Well, I don't know, cause it looks ripped, that's all. I just wanted you to be aware in case.
You did, no, you're lying though. You're just harassing me. Well, it's, it, well, we'll let other people try. Should I look at my pocket? You guys gonna stop walking up behind me? I'll go, and I'd like to, what I'd like to do, get up against the wall. And I have you guys follow me, walk behind me, then I'll check my pocket, okay? Will that make you happy?
You know where no one's gonna fall in? You know where no one can fall in?
Yeah.
Where?
Or actually, no, I'm not thinking about that right now.
Can't fall in.
But if I'm not doing anything wrong, I'm not supposed to just go home, or am I? Am I doing something wrong here?
Absolutely, you're doing everything you're allowed to do, you're actually a model citizen.
That's what I thought, and then I'm being threatened. He just said that I'm not gonna be followed if I go home.
No, if you go home, no one is allowed to follow you in your home, cause that'd be a crime. So no one will follow you in your home, if they did, you call me and I'd come help you out. But you hear, hear people.
On your Red Bull, on your Red Bull, the Red Bull. That's a joke we have, Lucas.
Which one, Red Bull?
Like, this guy lifts a bunch of weights, he lifts weights all week, and then again, one is like, Red Bull, and he just drinks Red Bull when it comes to dealing with me.
I do, uh, maybe.
It's kind of funny, kind of funny. Something like that, yeah.
No Red Bull for me.
Sorry for that door doesn't open into you, I'm gonna put your camera back.
Nah. He just got a lot of stuff, actually.
What's the website so we can?
Lucas, come on, man, you know, you've been lying like that, you know what it is, I tell you a million times.
I wanna be like the seven or eight follower.
You're obsessed with it.
He's, he's up to seven, he's up to seven.
Seven, I wanna be an eight follower.
I'd like to support the community. That's a good angle, and that's a good angle. You should be a photographer. Oh, absolutely.
You ever hear of Olin Mills?
Huh?
Olin Mills?
No.
Photographer. Think you probably, it's like, basically where Dillard's per, uh.
Is that where you work? You work at Dillard's?
I don't know what that is, no, I don't work there.
At the photography place.
Why do you think I work there?
Because, I thought that's what we're talking about, I guess.
No, you don't, you just speak lies. Why do you tell lies if you're a police officer? You oughta have better. How are you gonna get anything working when you're just lying? Yeah, that's not right. Have you just gotta just lie, hey, how's it going? That's the guy, that's the guy, that's the one guy who could morally shame me, you could, you could tell me, you just gotta look, study the budget, study the money. All this, and like, he's actually right, you know what I mean? If you, if I knew the money. For some of it, you get more insight, or, like, that's the next step, you know what I mean?
What's the next step?
Like, looking at the budget, the money, the whole thing, getting an idea of everyone here.
Try and footage in there.
Uh, they, they were.
Because I'm talking about.
What you're missing is the search warrant going on right now up the road with like six different agencies.
Oh, for what?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I'm just hearing it, I'm hearing it on my radio.
That's for us to know, we can find out.
Yeah.
Have you ever heard of, uh, Southwest Florida Center? You know who that is?
No.
Oh, he does like, uh, he's a, he's a journalist, he does south, if you look him up, Southwest Florida Center. He goes to all these different places, and like, it pops up on your phone, he's there before most news places are.
He's the thousand.
Thousand, pop thousand, without a doubt the most popular journalist around.
I think he, I heard he's the number one guy.
And that's why everybody knows him, so, I, I don't know of any other good journalists, I don't.
If I remember right, I think he came down from the Boston area.
Yes, he did. Yeah, he's like the number one Boston journalist that, yeah, trans看待. But yeah, they're doing something up the road, and that's where.
Hmm.
He's from Boston, right?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm off. Off sixteen, got me going, Navy.
You're from Norchester?
Navy, and then, um, the other guy, the resistance. They don't like, YouTube doesn't like him. He's not with you guys either.
What about Fane Hall? They were talking about Fane Hall.
It's all, oh, that's why I said I don't wanna go there.
Because of Fane Hall?
No, I get, I, I get a feel, cause see, my family, I haven't, I gotta actually say it, you gotta listen. You don't listen, I will tell you, you don't wanna listen. Do you wanna hear it? Do you wanna hear it?
What?
Not really.
No, he doesn't, so he's like, bullshit.
If it's interesting.
Really, where, where is it going on at? The search?
Search warrants?
Yeah.
Del Prado and Kismet area, that's all, that's all I tell us, Del Prado and Kismet area.
Is that near the Walmart?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Oh, they don't let me go there.
No, 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 Del Prado and Kismet, Del Prado and Kismet.
I know, but I might have a corridor, I can't go there.
Yeah, I know you've got a corridor.
The emergency.
Oh, you probably, if you have a corridor, yeah, I wouldn't go there.
Yeah, the emergency, and they, they don't let me do it. Is that stuff for real, or is they just in a fake out?
In judgment, those are real.
What? No, no, the, um. I know Kayla, it happened there, but.
They're only for people born in October.
They don't care about the neighborhood, right?
I'm sorry?
They don't care about that neighborhood, that neighborhood, is that neighborhood a real thing, or, or is that just a fake out?
Well.
Well, Del Prado and Kismet.
Oh, that area, that's a real thing.
Well, why would it be? Why would it be? They got something up in there, right? They got the guys, they get the, someone has like, oh, you got the guy that they. Oh, they knew he didn't drive out yet in his car, right? He's up in there somewhere.
I don't know if it's car, no.
He's got, like, they're worried about the dude, they probably got some fugitives on. You gotta come back and pay your tax, you gotta, right? That's, that's what it is, like, cause that, that flew Monday. The guys are, the guy, the guys are still up in there, I think, right?
You gotta ask the, what South West.
Cause they know every.
Yeah, I, no, he's a good one to follow.
He's definitely the best independent journalist around.
I, I get the feeling that's not, that the neighborhood's like not, that's kind of a fake out, it's kind of a fake out.
No, you want me to show you?
No, I mean, I mean, there's not really stuff going on there. Like, like that neighborhood, like, like it's a diver, like, you know what I mean, like a diversion. A diversion, a diversion, you know what I mean? I knew Lafayette was the real thing. It's the only place, it's the only thing that was a real thing. I knew it, I knew it, I could tell. Um, everyone else. It's training, fake out, who knows, or it's just so many layers, you get ten times much, twenty minutes, a real thing come in, whatever that might be. Lafayette is the real thing.
Don't show me, it's on the news, everyone's covering it right now.
Oh, really? Why didn't you guys, you guys just said it's my house, like, you forgot to do that, like, you already. You know, I know, but you could've gotten me, man. You could've pressured me a little bit.
We're not gonna lie to you.
You could've been like, and I would've, like, yeah. Is that what, that's why I didn't really ask, too.
No, you were coming.
That's how you guys flew in, Lucas flew in, yeah, maybe it is your house.
Did you ever do anything positive, like, positive stories on?
Yeah, caught you, man, yes, yes, caught the whole CIA.
What's the positive story?
The CIA and, um, you know, you know, however this is gonna work out, it's gonna, a better way. All the Ukraine money, all the Ukraine money, two billion dollars a year on the parking lot. Just on parking lot. And then, then sending everyone around, it's gonna be the elections, everyone's gonna be messing with elections and. But it's like, check that out, instead of, what is that thing? Katy did, check out that bug. That's like a Katy did thing. Thing's beautiful, isn't it? Oh, that's cool. Yeah.
Hey, you know, a good story to cover?
What?
It'd be why is that dice on, on the, um.
You ever, did you ever see the dice?
Ever see the dice?
No.
Right there.
You gotta look down.
Uh.
Get warmer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Man, they had this dude that's gonna throw my phone on one of these roof things. They would like throw my phone on this roof, it would sit there, and then you guys would leave it, not you guys, but like downtown.
CIA way definitely coming in.
It's CIA, it's different things, it's, it's really different factions in this second. There's not one CIA, it's like, you got, you guys, you got, cause you got the real stuff going on here.
There is the real stuff going on.
But you showed, you showed your real stuff.
I showed you real stuff that the news is, that all the journalists are covering, and you just don't wanna believe it.
Yeah.
Huh?
Most of the journalists.
No, no, the, the real journalists are covering it, the real journalists are covering it.
Those aren't real, those aren't real.
Did you see the news girls that were inside a little bit ago?
Yeah.
That's why they ran out.
Yeah.
You, uh. There's like six different law enforcement.
It's all fake out, that, that whole neighborhood, that's all fake out. It's my feeling.
I don't know the exact address.
I, I, I got out of the neighborhood, I know they're gonna kill me there before the Kayla, that's why I stopped. I couldn't go to Walmart and just sit there, I saw Morgan.
We're not that, I don't, not.
No, it was hot there, no, that whole neighborhood from Walmart, down, down that, that road, that twentieth, or whatever, you know, behind Del Prado? They're making it hot, on purpose.
That's where that crazy guy lives, right? The guy that got arrested for trespassing?
I don't know.
I think so.
Well, that's one of the things, same.
Which time?
Huh? He got arrested a couple of times for trespass, he's got a bunch of injunctions against him.
Injunction.
So.
Are injunctions a real thing?
How you handle this stress, you're really good.
Huh?
You're really good with your fear and your stress.
I am.
I mean, I admire it, I love it.
Appreciate that.
This guy's good.
No mistake.
Yeah, this guy keeps it functioning, he functions in fear.
A lot of yoga.
Yeah.
Have you ever heard, you ever heard of hot yoga?
Yes.
Or goat yoga?
Yes.
I, I do goat yoga.
Have you seen the girls going out, like, you get them some of the, on Miami, hold on, now, they're, they're Barbie ways now. You know, they usually have their Kevlar fake hat, voluptuous, now they go straight out, like, they're going on, sometimes in town. Bo, you know, Barbie ways, they're gonna come out, really hot, they'll be able to move around. Huh?
You're not, you're, did you call me voluptuous?
No, no, they.
No, I.
I'm sorry, but I'm not, I'm not that way, but.
And they're bony, they're, I mean, you can see, they're like hot yoga, hot yoga.
He actually told me, he told me that I work out, inside.
And now he's on Red Bull, but this is Red Bull day.
Huh? What's your, what's your go-to routine?
Goat yoga.
Oh.
That's always been.
Baby goats or regular goats?
You do hot yoga?
You gotta do baby goats, because I think they can jump on you.
Yes.
You don't want them too heavy.
Yeah, but.
It's because you are bony and voluptuous.
I am bony and voluptuous at the same time.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this guy's good, this guy's so.
He is.
Yeah.
He's our go-to guy.
Yeah, and then they seem like a, yeah.
I've been trying to take, I've been trying to take a report for like an hour, I'm.
I think you mess yourself up for a while.
I, I, I only do certified journalists. If you have credentials, I will follow you on TikTok.
Credentials, man, that's all one company, too, you know?
Oh, oh, let me guess, are, are you on, uh.
Trump Social.
You're on Trump.
Oh, my God.
Truth Social.
I thought it doesn't work, it's, it doesn't.
You look more like a Disney dot com kinda guy.
Yeah.
Like Nickelodeon?
No, Disney.
Disney dot com?
Disney dot com.
Yeah, they're doing, yeah. I knew that Lafayette Street was real.
Lafayette Street, there's nothing wrong.
Not now, of course not now. That was like, the money was going through there. It was just, um. I could tell. That's the only thing that's real, everything else, you know, I even say apparent. It's one place. I think. Everything else is, they just fold it up. Get out of the corner here, you wasted.
So do you strictly just kick call, or, I think I saw some of your, uh.
Yeah.
Famous work at Fort Myers, right? You go to Fort Myers?
Yeah, of course.
Well, San, you ever go, did you pay the six bucks to a San dollar, or is that a little steep?
I don't know. Oh, that thing, yeah, no.
A little steep, no, you might get off.
It's too crowded there.
In San Antonio, cause of the hurricane?
Yeah, well, they jam up the houses on the coast. You know what that's for, right? You know why they're gonna tear up some anger out here, my theory. I think they will, too. You know why? Cause it's like, it's like they're gonna tear it down someday and put a real city in, it's a placeholder, or the military stuff. Usually you think, okay, you know it's trailers, trailers, it's slumming or something like that, you can see, you can see how it's a placeholder, all these, um.
They live off the coast of Cattie though, do some SEAL training.
Yeah, yeah, but tunneling.
A tun, a tunnel?
Yeah.
No, tunnels up in Tampa.
Can't really tunnel in in Cattie though.
No, why, that sand?
Well, I mean, it's also.
No, that's it, that's it.
Six inches above sea level.
It doesn't matter, no, that's like, tunneling is about getting under the water anyway, that's the thing, it's all future. You're gonna have it under that sand, it's gonna go all through. Oh, yeah, right through, and they'll, they'll have a, the machine, they'll go drive right through there. No, horseshoe crabs, horseshoe crabs go through that sand.
Is that in Nemo one or two?
Horseshoe crabs go through that sand. They're gonna go through, okay, the thing, the thing is, I mean, you, you gotta see my, um.
You're thinking Little Mermaid, where they go under the water.
You didn't see my video? Do you know what happened? When that sand settles back, you know, um, if nuke hits it, it's like boom, it's like, it cracks, it's just gonna be. This is gonna be like rock, you know what I mean, like, if you hit it, it's like hard.
I have no idea what you mean, but I'm just nodding.
You can just kinda go through it, the machine's gonna go through it, even under high pressure, you know, they have tunnels, and then whatever, when something hits.
Did you teach this in the Boston school system when you were up there?
It will, um, it will take shock, like a rock, um, or like some, somewhere like a rock, and then it'll like come, go back into its sand form. That's my idea, that's what I think the future is. It might not be, it might be, but, but that's a good conjecture. You gotta admit, that's cool, and that's why they got so much activity here, and that's why it's not just some hokey thing, it's not just training, it's not just CIA training, it's not just stealing Ukraine money. It's not fake outs, it's not, it's not the drugs, and it might never have been, you guys might have been clean here. Relatively clean, like, I suspected, but you never know, too, because it's so, so good, you, people come here from Michigan, also go to Texas, you wouldn't even know, they wouldn't even know which. Or something. And they're faking it out the whole time. Apparently. I don't know, it's been dragging everyone in here. But that's what I think, and you got Navy activity. So we're gonna be like, what is it, all under, you go out here, it's a Pine Island, right? And it's all that sand, all that, it's like that nice beach.
At the beach, there's usually sand.
Yeah, and under the water, it's all that stuff. They got the infrastructure under there. Nothing in touch, it's small, drone bases, whatever.
Different than Georgia clay, right?
Definitely different than Boston.
This will be like a city like Tampa.
Definitely di, different than Boston.
But the worst case.
Boston's not as much sand, it's like garbage piles.
Oh, it's just total, I think it's just, yeah, garbage piles, the concrete on top of the garbage piles.
Oh, yeah, they got clay, too.
They do, yeah.
That squeezes out.
Whitey, he was the man up there.
What do you know about Whitey?
What do you know about?
Yeah, he was, wasn't he part of the CIA? Pretty sure they did a documentary on him.
Oh, you had to say that, did you tell him, you, you, like, cause I said that once?
No, no, I thought they did a movie about it, wasn't he?
Oh, I said it once, Lucas said I tell once, you know, that's like, um, but it doesn't show on camera, you've had two, two bad ones, but they don't show on camera. Now you're right up on top of him. I said that, and Lucas got all quiet, Lucas got all quiet, they made him get all quiet.
He's still a documentary, are you gonna tell a translator? Oh, right.
I don't know.
Yeah, she's pretty good, yeah.
Yeah.
Someone doesn't like to be walked up on behind, you really like walking behind me. Someone doesn't like to be walked up on behind, you really like walking behind me?
Oh, you went further away?
But you've called me voluptuous, and then you walk behind me.
No, no, no.
You're gonna be my new.
No, I was telling you about the girls for the Barbie waste. I was talking about their.
Voluptuous or voluptuous?
I'm not sure, I would ask him how to spell it, but I think that would be too.
Use it in a sentence.
That's a lie.
Is it voluptuous or voluptuous?
So what happened to everyone, no one's in the parking lot?
Yeah.
Like even for.
Everyone was up at that scene.
Oh, yeah, 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 uh, oh, all the undercover, all Lee County Undercovers are fixing her.
All the media ran out.
Yeah. Yeah, and it looked empty before though, but, oh, yeah, yeah, maybe.
Looks like it's gonna start raining soon.
Yeah, there was that, uh, the van that's parked out there, definitely has the gas tank leaking, I thought my came in, was it that ACE, the gas tank leaking?
Something like that.
Well, I told the guys, I was like, hey, it's anybody's van, I was like, your tires are getting low, they look flat, you should probably, don't look at it, none of them said it was there, so I said, just. Let's find, we'll wait till tomorrow, and then we'll try and help the personnel.
Mini vans are attractive, you have a mini van?
No.
Anybody here have one?
No, but I'm, you do? And see, I'm, well, that's not yours in out there, is it?
No, no, my, it was, it's not twenty twenty-four, is it?
I don't know, but.
Is it older?
I, I don't know, I'm not good with cars, but it definitely had something dripping from it, and I had two of the tires flat, and I was like, looks like, uh, that's not gonna be drivable out of here.
Use some work.
See, there they go again.
More people showing up.
More, yeah, and it's still going on.
It is? That's a, the, um. Yeah, that would be, so they say, they give you this injunction, don't do that road, and then that's like a big.
Oh, you?
Yeah, then.
Which injunction are you talking about, the first one or the second one?
What's the second one?
Oh, you have.
No, it's the first one. Lucas thinks I have two injunctions.
An injunction is when, if you want, we can look it up for you, but an injunction is when a judge says that you've probably done something wrong, and you shouldn't go somewhere.
No, they didn't say that.
Cause that trespass too.
No, they didn't say it.
Yeah, they usually, they can either arrest you for that, or they can give you a warning, but if you've been told several times, they'll usually go arrest you probably.
So what, what injunction is it?
What?
He said, what two injunctions?
How many do you have?
We can look them up and see if there's.
You just said.
You want to see if there's a lack of three?
How many do you have?
You said I had two injunctions.
No, I don't know, I'm just spitballing.
Oh, you don't know, you're fine, okay.
I'm not lying.
Well, you did, well, you're lying, man, this guy's walking up.
You have seven.
I kinda wanted to get you both in, so I'm gonna go over here, you guys just, can you just settle down for a moment?
Stay here.
Yeah, I mean, let me just.
I have definitely turned, because it's polite to.
Wait, then Lucas has gotta come over.
Yeah, it's polite to, to face the person.
Oh, it's what?
It's polite to face the person you're talking to.
Yeah, but I'll walk up on a circle and threaten them.
I'm not, I haven't moved from my little post here.
In the context, yeah, yeah, you have Lucas doing it, or he does it.
Oh, would you like information on the injunctions, you could go online and get them, what was your first name again? Kenneth, cause yeah, you can just Google Kenneth, and then it tells you, you know, whatever your last name is, I don't know, it's probably Eagle or something, uh, or. Something like that, I don't know, and then you can just Google that, and it pops up with all the injunctions that you have, if you have any, so that way you would know if you have one.
It's not here again, that's why no one's here.
Wish I had this much time out here, you know?
What, when you're standing around, that's what you do, man, you just stand around, this guy's like walking up and down too. There you are.
Nope.
Why do you guys just lie, you know, or you just do?
Kenneth, Kenneth, you can't zoom in on a camera, and say people are walking.
I didn't zoom in on the camera.
Oh.
This thing doesn't zoom, or maybe it does zoom, I don't wanna do that, or I don't wanna do that. Actually, it's, it's too, I wish I was a wide angle, this one, you know what's good about this is, um, I can look into the sun, I can film into the sun.
Careful with the. I would, I would definitely do that, you should do that as much as possible.
Or into headlights, it gets the stuff around, it doesn't blur it out, it's got a good lens for that.
Kenneth, I would tell you what, I bet you that you can't look into the sun for at least thirty minutes, Jerry.
Or headlights.
Or headlights.
How much, how much battery charge you got on that battery?
Boy.
The, what, that Android one from nineteen ninety-four, probably not that much.
Oh, this is weird, it sucks, this is a chunky phone. Well, I'm depressed, see, this is like a, I'm depressed, I never have, like, I never wanna get into this, listen, I never wanted to do this.
You're depressed, or you're the press, don't sound.
So I've never gotten a phone, thinking, that was a good phone, I probably wouldn't be this.
Did you say you're depressed?
Yeah.
Or you're the press?
I hate doing this, I didn't get to this, do this because I like it. It's like.
Are you the press?
And so I never go, I don't have any pride in my phone.
Are you the press or the pressed? I couldn't hear what you said.
The architecture, this is so, look at that, look at this building, yeah, that, even that one's beautiful, isn't it?
I don't know, what are you looking at?
This, that building over there, well, of course, this one's great, but that.
What are you looking at out here?
I, I don't know what you're looking at.
This seventies style, I guess seventies style.
Where's that?
The architecture of that building right there.
Do you know what year the city became a city?
No.
You don't know that, do you know what year the police department became a police department? You should know your history of where you're filming.
Just over here.
Yeah, you definitely need to get a better camera.
I know.
Well, he did upgrade to this tripod, before it was like a tool.
You guys have a tripod still, when I got arrested, they gave me back my tripod, it's at the police station.
You got arrested?
You guys still have the tripod, but I haven't gone to get it.
Where did you get arrested for?
When was this?
Why don't you look that up, look that up.
I can, what's your last name?
It's like a bird, eagle, come here. Can't, not pigeon. Not.
Let me actually search for, I'm gonna search for, let's see, press and Kate portal, Kenneth, not borrowing Alan Hawk.
Going at Hawks. Right? It's only fair, you know our name, and we're gonna know yours.
Alright, hold on a second.
I don't know his name, oh, I don't know your name though.
Kenneth, oh, there you are.
Yeah.
How is you? Right? I mean, I just Googled Kenneth, and it's right there. There is an injunction, oh, man, you were, you were out there, I'm trying to tell him the truth. Wait a second, hold on. The best part about the press is.
It's freedom of the press.
Hold on, I think I can do that. Best part is that everybody can see in our body cameras.
What's that thing, AB plus, what does that mean? What does AB plus mean? What is that? Lucas, what does that mean?
Well, he's not Lucas, I am.
I know, but he won't tell me.
Oh, he's looking somewhere.
Oh, it's, okay, that's what it's, Supreme of the Press.
What does that mean, what does that mean, what's AB plus mean?
He was on AB honor roll for school?
It's Kenneth Clark.
What, what is it?
Hawks the second, born October twenty-seventh, nineteen sixty-four, you are a white male, six foot, hundred and thirty pounds.
Hundred and thirty pounds?
Very, very soft on that.
You live at three O two Southeast fifteenth street, according to this.
Is that right, you could say?
It's on, it's on.
Is it, I don't know if that's right.
It's right here.
I know, but.
But look, it's on.
I hear you say.
But it's a Freedom of the Press, it's right there, and it's, it was trespassing on April twenty-third, five hundred dollar bond. Resisting on April twenty-third, five hundred dollar bond.
Did it hurt?
It what hurt? It what hurt, Lucas?
When you got trespassed? Did it hurt?
Oh, it's like, you got a ticket for driving the wrong way.
What?
Oh, and what's that?
When you get driving the wrong way?
Oh, that's like a ticket, I, oh, they.
Was it a Florida license or is it?
But it's, it got, um.
Massachusetts license.
It got, um, it got, what do you call it, dismissed.
Cause if you live down here for.
It got dismissed.
Certain amount of time, you need to have a Florida license, right?
Oh, how long?
Nope, I believe it's ten days.
Ten days?
Oh, Kenneth, you're right, it was, uh, two years ago, you're right, it was October thirty.
It got dismissed.
But your injunction, what about the injunction?
Don't stick around for a while.
That's really bad. Hey, what do you guys do with COVID, were you guys, did you get it?
COVID?
Yeah, in Boston, all the cops were doing that, they all got themselves sick real early.
Better.
On purpose.
Stay away.
Well, did you get it?
We don't wanna, we don't wanna bring that fictitious stuff back.
Well, one of them died, they don't care though. The older ones, it's a little bit of risk, but they get their time off.
Kenneth, you also have some white.
He doesn't think anybody.
Would you want me to show you, take a picture and show you, I hear, well, no, seriously, your left shoulder.
How bad is it, is it really bad?
Yeah, I'm, I'll, I'll take a picture on my phone and show you, see.
Yeah, okay.
How's that?
Does it look like someone put it there or something?
That's what I'm gonna show you.
Bird?
Yes, uh.
Put that on.
Oh, that's not that bad.
There is stuff all, it's all over your back.
That's just one little thing, why is that on my mask?
I don't wanna go behind you to get the rest of it.
Oh, you don't, okay.
We already covered that.
You want me to get the rest of it, take a picture?
Not really, I'll, I'll leave it for later, so it's not urgent. See, always gotta walk behind you.
Actually. The good thing about this open area, I can kinda walk wherever I want.
You're just walking on it.
Oh, sorry about.
Trying to use my tripod, what is he doing?
Warm outside.
You do hot yoga?
I do, goat yoga, but you gotta use the goat.
What's the goat yoga?
Too hot for the goat, you ever seen goat yoga?
What is it?
I will show you, you will be very amazed.
My friend used to do hot yoga.
Goat yoga's even better.
They have like the crazies, the Bikram yoga.
You want me to show you?
Okay.
Yeah, you never heard of goat yoga? See?
Yeah, cause he don't look like he do hot yoga.
No, I do goat yoga.
Do you have to stay in the air conditioning?
But, yeah, but it's goat yoga.
Do you stay in the air conditioning? He does the air conditioning.
I do do the air conditioning.
Oh, man, you guys are gonna melt, and then it gets hot, aren't you? He's in.
You wanna switch out? It is.
Switch out? What does that mean, switch out?
The CIA only allows us to work so many times in this spot, so we have to switch out from our office.
That's why you see us keep moving, we don't wanna be in the same spot.
So what do you mean, now, you're both gonna?
Switch out because.
Would you both switch out, or you two?
No, I, I came on here before, you remember, I switched out, I went on the radio and told them, hey, I'm switching out.
Uh, so where were, you were gonna go somewhere else, back in there?
Oh, that would be amazing.
Or like, what about Lucas, he's just stay here, cause he's always out here.
Well, he's the boss right now, so he told, he, he gets to decide what he wants to do.
Oh, okay.
He's tired of going.
I, I had a very long session of goat yoga today, I'm sure he's tired.
Yeah.
Over there. Over there.
They really work here, don't they?
Who?
The city council.
Do they really work here?
Yes, they're, they're, these are hours, this is like a real job.
Probably should have interviewed.
I know, yeah, probably should, yeah. Maybe, there's that guy, that guy, that's the guy, man.
He is the man.
That fuzzy man, see, if you could know the man. No, I mean, that's making fun of myself, that's like W said that, like, um, see, he could tell you the stats and.
He is a very knowledgeable guy.
And the stuff, and even if it's like the other, other stuff that's not known, like, you get the context, you know what I mean, it's like. He actually, can you probably look at the views of scenery and comprehend and look at a map? Cause that would be the next level, I do all this stuff, I do all this stuff, really, I should be part of a team, and we should have a society. Uh, what?
Have you got into drones?
You know about the drone that, that, that was spying on me when it landed in my yard, right?
So you know what?
Have you seen that one? You, did you see that video?
Which one?
Where they were spying on me? Someone, they flew a drone into my yard. When, uh, it's watering the lawn, I, maybe I knocked it out, or maybe it's just on purpose, it just likes to flash.
You're watering the lawn, the lawn on the wrong day.
I think it's, it's made for me to find it, I think it's made for me to find it.
Watering the lawn on the wrong day.
Oh, this, this. Yeah, you know what I'm gonna do, do you know what a mandamus is? Talk about injunction, do you know what a mandamus is?
A what?
Mandamus.
Mandamus.
Yeah, that term, legal term.
I know, I definitely know who Matt Damon is.
Oh, yeah.
Matt Damon.
Like, these friends of Ben Affleck.
It's when you. It's when you...
They're from, uh... Where are they from?
It's, it's coming, man.
It's when you...
Yeah.
Charles.
Ask for a relief from the court. Um, and it's an emergency situation. Um, it can't be done at... Through the proper procedure.
Oh, an emergency.
Um, similar well. And, um, yeah, and then that if it doesn't get done, there's gonna be irreparable damage. So... You can go, I can go to federal court, when it...
My insults are gonna be irreparable right now.
I mean, that's one of the next things we're going, so you guys know. You guys can tell them. I don't care. I gotta write up a mandamus for federal court. They'll be like, why are you in federal court? Well... Here's like why it's not working. Why there's no other, there's no relief and, and it's a vital... Where at? Oh, you're right. I think this... Hold on.
Squirrel?
I know, man. Well, that first one would go, I think squirrel's the first dog I noticed.
That dog will walk first, squirrel.
The CIA dog, like, it was one, it was one of your locals, but it was trained, yeah. Ooh, Waterford's here. You guys better not mess with me.
Who's here? What's going on? What happened?
Damn.
Hey, make sure you film her, cause if she doesn't pick up after her dog...
Ah, you guys. I got more than that, though.
I definitely think you have a real fit.
More than that, man. You'll see. Oh, I've seen stuff that would scare you, man. Wait till you find out. They're not fighting the Cubans anymore.
Oh, well, we don't get it.
The KGB, Cuban KGB. It's not unfriendly anymore. The Navy. I think. They have guys with, um, they look like Saddam with their mustache shaved.
More Cubans, huh?
And they look like, yeah. Yeah.
Man, I can hear it on the videos, slower, just a little bit.
Oh, you can, okay. You're right. Although I take your word for, oh, that's a good, that's a good, oh, shot right there. Check this out, man. That's really good. If Lucas wanted to walk on it.
You get a Cuban.
I got another guy.
I had delicious Cuban coffee today.
Capacito?
Cafe con leche.
Yes.
That's a good one, though, right?
How about you? Do you, uh...
Doesn't it make you paranoid, man?
Doesn't it make you...
Doesn't it make you...
You should definitely not have Cuban coffee.
No.
Yes, definitely not. I would also suggest never trying meth.
Or Red Bull.
Yes, you don't need...
You are the one, man.
I was not drinking Red Bull. If you look in the trash, you'll see it was not a Red Bull.
You put it in the trash?
Yeah.
So what happens if I take it out of the trash? Is that, could you tell me not to? Is that like my free property if I can get it?
Once it's discarded, you can take it.
Yeah, but you guys could say that that's private, personal, and it's, it is your property. No, I don't want it.
Anything pisses out a rat.
I guess, just hypothetical. It's a hypothetical, man.
I'm pretty sure you've definitely dug in the trash before. If you, you, we put it in the trash, so that way it gets sanitary.
Yeah.
It's not just lame all over the place.
Yeah, it's one of those, like, you're...
You're a good company, Kenneth.
You're a good...
We also have dug in the trash before.
Absolutely. Definitely have. Speaking of trash, Kenneth... I would really, really like to know where you got those boot shoes at.
Probably... The thrift store.
What's that, Marine?
No, it's a thrift store.
West Marine?
It's a thrift store. A lot of them are junk. They put crap in them, but these have all the leather, I made sure.
I'm sure you do know this, but when you go to a thrift store, you can kinda shake them down, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's like the jacket's missing a pocket, or it's got a hole in the pocket.
And they had cardboard in them, but I think that's not supposed to be necessarily bad.
If you, if you rip them... My clothes rip if, you know, someone grabbed it or something like that, or you throw them around, or you rip it, then yeah, you should probably go get... Perfect for that.
Like, if you trespass or something.
No, this is ripped, cause I had to cut this pocket open. It's a cheap jacket, that's why. I got the expensive ones, but this was cooler. It's like, it's, it's like, kind of big.
Why don't you wear pants and a full jacket?
Well, if they're not, if they're, um, if they're got... No, they got good drape and, and the air goes through. It's cooler sometimes. Guys, you guys don't listen. You just stay in the air conditioning.
Go into the city council meeting.
You guys don't dress for the heat, and you're all listening. You're sitting in the air conditioning. You're asking questions. Same as those guys that are trim bushes. You know, they, they wear the loose clothing, right? In big sometimes.
You definitely wear loose clothing too. I seem like to be very casual.
Sometimes.
Yes. Now, the CIA wear black suits. Black suits, black toppers, white cars, always white car, white life, white cars, black toppers.
And if a CIA guy really in Tom Park, no socks.
No socks, absolutely. Because they can't. Because where else are they gonna hide the stuff, besides in between their shoes?
See, got you thinking, no, no one can.
No, I've seen my these people, they, um, they train with barefoot.
Right, they do. That's why they take their boot shoes off.
Some of them, no, not the boot shoes, the others, some of them, and their shoes will come off if it gets to a thing and they just train barefoot. Which is called ice run barefoot.
Uh, look, they are doing something though at three nine two two Pine Island Road right now.
Do you know where that is?
No, I know Pine Island Road, it's one way. Where is it?
Northeast, three nine two two northeast Pine Island Road.
You know where the movie theater is?
No, not really.
There's a movie theater, maybe like a... Home's camp or something, right around that, too.
We know exactly where it's at, Kenneth.
Well, where, like, what part, what road intersects? Like, you know? Barbara, and then there's Del Prado. Tell me the intersection.
Oh, further, further.
Oh, like into Fort Myers?
You're going forty mile.
Oh, okay, okay, not north Fort Myers. Oh, yeah, that. Oh, that park. Is that park near there?
Do you know our parks? Do you still know parks?
Well, that one. You know where I went to, that one. I went to that one.
Kenneth, I thought you weren't allowed near schools or parks. Are you not allowed near schools or parks anywhere? Or are there just certain schools and certain parks?
What's that about?
I don't know what I'm asking. You just said you weren't allowed near parks.
You don't know, you said it. What is it?
Slandering's all talk.
Yeah, you, you, you asked.
We're running out of footage. You got us on there for two hours, so we're just making...
Yeah, you're just slandering me?
I'm not slandering anything.
So what does it mean?
You said you're not allowed near parks. I asked you, which ones are you not allowed near? Cause we could look them up and we could get them taken off. I thought that we were having a conversation. I could get, if you're, I could say if you're allowed back. That's what we do.
Allowed back where?
Whatever park you're not allowed near.
I didn't say I'm not allowed near a park.
Which one can you go on? Which one? I, I missed it.
I don't know. He said it. He says I'm not allowed near parks.
No.
Oh, did I mishear you?
I didn't say that.
That must have been what I heard. Play the tape back.
He is lying.
Might have been in my ear.
Just play the tape back.
You're lying. So you're starting up that. I could have saved her life, you know? Kayla. I knew that, that neighborhood is bad. They, they get, they, they wouldn't let me in that, they wouldn't, they wouldn't let me in that neighborhood. Okay, I got jumped there.
Only some people can be here. I get it. I get it.
They wouldn't, it should, it would have been me. They had, they got, the one guy that...
Oh, all heroes wear cakes, Kenny.
Like what? You don't care and just lying about it?
I wasn't around.
You guys didn't wanna do anything about it. You just let it happen.
You, you understood that you could have stopped it and you didn't.
If you didn't stop me, if you didn't, like, just...
I didn't stop anything. I was...
Yeah, you didn't. You didn't. I got jumped and the police wouldn't... I messed with it, or I messed with them. Well, what about preventing stuff like that, you know, and I could just see it coming in that neighborhood? Like, hey, why would I say that's the most dangerous neighborhood? I go all around with all this stuff. Must mean... Like, I know something, right? Which I do.
Is this dangerous here? Is City Hall dangerous?
Sure.
Then why are you here? Because then you're not doing your job as a journalist. You're not out there informing the public.
He's dropping a truth bomb.
You need to be out there informing the public of the dangerous neighborhoods.
He just dropped a truth bomb on us.
You guys made me take all the footage down. Everything I did investigating that murder scene.
That was the CIA that did that.
No. You think that was CIA?
I'm not part of the CIA.
What do you think?
There's the dog again.
Man. So you think that's funny, huh? I was just telling about Kayla. They were like mocking me. I could have probably saved her. I could have stopped her from getting killed. Oh, he's gonna make a phone call?
He's got a thing, he's got a thing.
I shouldn't have been chased out of that neighborhood. That's before she got murdered. You know? Like, we could have stopped that from happening, probably, whatever they're doing there. Or maybe, oh, you just read the paper. This guy just threw paper. He's throwing paper now. What was that about?
I tried to get in the trash for my Kobe skills.
Oh, yeah, I'm not like I'm complaining. It's kinda cool. You show some, hey, what's up with him? Like, he...
No, he's...
He's not in the club.
You ever hear of a rock?
He's not in the club. He has, what? Oh, he went there? He went there?
No, no. Well, he didn't go there, yeah.
He did go there?
Plymouth.
Oh, yeah, Plymouth. Well, what, what, he's not in the club? He's not in the club? He has to, he just, he's just a home, homeboy, right? He's from the town. He's from the town.
Which town?
He grew up here in Cape Coral.
Uh, this isn't the town. The town would be like...
It's not gonna be, it's gonna be a city. It's gonna be a city. So what, like, he's not in, right? He's not in the thing. I mean, this guy, there'd be... Yeah, I don't think that's right, you guys.
I don't understand why they keep the lights up on the trees.
Ledger's smart, if you're happy about the...
Huh?
I'm just sitting through the, I'm gonna tell Ledger. Make sure you sit through the full break.
Oh, yeah. I missed, I, I think it's no, we'll deal with that, plus I just, no.
What, uh, I'm gonna say text Ledger.
Make sure you watch. Every seventy seconds, minutes. And you, you notice that? How terrible is that, that that's the way it is?
Here comes your boy.
What? What's going with the... Huh?
The mini rocket.
Oh, the guy. He should get, oh, there he is.
You gotta get on the slow.
I know.
Do a slow.
I know, yeah.
Like a movie, like a movie scene.
Maybe. Oh, he's so worried about that. Now you're not worried about that. You just take lies. He should learn to talk without lying.
Please be careful. If it says caution, automatic door, on the door. I don't want you getting hit.
It's so funny, cause that's not police training.
Look, it says, I can read, though.
It's not police training.
I know Boston doesn't have the greatest education system.
I could tell you guys.
Uh, also, I mean, we weren't neighbors or anything, but...
That's not police training.
Your police training doesn't teach you how to read.
This guy has real police training here. You guys just have actor training. And you guys are like, he's gonna still be here. You guys are gonna have to retire out of here. And me and this guy are still gonna be here. Right? You're still gonna be here in twenty years. These guys will be gone. Lucas is gonna be gone. This guy's gonna be gone. He's gonna be, you know, he's gonna be, have his boat and his whatever he wants. His boat, his palm tree.
We are, we are getting, hopefully closer. Um, I'm hoping we're somewhere around here.
It's something.
Uh, what does it say? Forty twenty-two? Yeah, oh, look, yeah, we are right here.
Alright, I'm gonna go. I'll see y'all later. There's, oh, there's that guy. He's cool. I used to believe all this stuff, man. God. So I guess he did. They tripping, man. Thought there was like half staff before. Yeah, they probably did, just... Man, all this stuff's going on.